All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Okay, so hello, my name is Scott Stocking. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Has been the tradition for the last, I guess not tradition, has been the trend for the last four or so months we've been having hearings remotely. I will read the Planning Commission meeting process. It is somewhat different than we normally follow, but the normal procedure in terms of how we handle the public hearing, in terms of how the testimony goes as it say, but there are some changes because we have people remote joining us as well as in-house. So I'm going to go through this and that way we're all on the same page to proceed this evening. So this is the regularly scheduled May 27 meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. As I mentioned, I am Scott Stocking, the chairman of the commission. Tonight, for the benefit of those audience, I am joined by Community Development Director, David DeGroot, City Planner, Chayton Crew, a public transcriber, and you want to introduce yourself?
City Attorney Scott Finson.
Okay, so, and then we also have some commissioners present. We have John Mead, who's here in the room. We have Michael Slivka, who's also a commissioner here in the room, and we have Rebecca Holman, who's also in the hearing room here in City Hall. And then we have Mim Evans joining us remotely, and Adam Maschil, who's also joining us remotely, who are two commissioners also on the commission. Okay, so in here, it's the Governor Pritzker's bridge to Phase Five of the Restorial Illinois Plan related to the COVID-19 pandemic. In-person gatherings are limited. To accommodate public participation, the city of Geneva meetings are now a combination of in-person and virtual, while also being livestreamed to allow public to hear all testimony, discussion, and roll call votes in real time. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in the livestream meeting by accessing the link provided on the meeting agenda found in the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. Attendees wishing to provide written public comment may continue to do so during the meeting by sending an email to publiccomment@geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comments, please see notice regarding public meeting and public comment rule modification due to COVID-19, a link to which is provided in the agenda for this evening's meeting. With our use of virtual meeting platform tonight, there may be some technical difficulties as we move through the agenda, so please bear with us. A public hearing will be continued at tonight's meeting from the May 13 meeting for Item 5A regarding a proposed text amendment to the B-3E Business District, followed by a second public hearing for Item 5B regarding the requested special use for a concealed personal wireless communications tower. Every individual desiring to listen and/or participate in meeting has been provided that opportunity through the participation information included in various public notices and the agenda for this meeting. A public hearing notice with the same information was also published in the Daily Herald 15 days prior to tonight's public hearing. All interested parties are invited to present testimony for or against petition and cross-examine witnesses presenting testimony for or against petition. At this point, I will describe the remote public hearing procedures of the Planning and Zoning Commission for those who are not familiar with the process. First, the public hearing will be open and the petitioner will provide an overview of the contemplated text amendment and will present any supporting documents or exhibits. Following the presentation, commission members will have the first opportunity to ask petitioner questions. After initial questions by commission members, members of the public will have an opportunity to present evidence and testimony for or against the application and cross-examine the petitioner. Public participants may provide testimony either through written comments or by speaking at the meeting. All members of the public providing evidence and testimony are also subject to cross-examination by other members of the public and/or the commission. Members speaking during the public hearing agree to understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Members of the public intending in person will have a first opportunity to provide public testimony, followed by the virtual audience. Using the sign-in sheet for tonight's meeting, we will call upon individuals in the orders they appear on the sheet. In the event that not all members of the public have presented the desired testimony during allotted time at this meeting, the public hearing will be continued at a future meeting. Members of the virtual audience who wish to speak will be asked to raise their hand feature through the virtual meeting platform. Audience members will then be called on, unmuted, and given opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If you speak multiple times, please state your name each time. If your comment has already been made and your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from veering off-topic and direct comments to the subject matter. After providing comment, each speaker will be muted once again. Please note that there may be a slight delay in becoming unmuted and being able to begin speaking. All comments are recorded so that a written transcription and minutes can be prepared for this meeting. Just a reminder that all speakers are asked to present their comments in a respectful and courteous manner. At this time, I'd like to remind the commission members of the public that the Planning and Zoning Commission has very specific parameters and criteria to consider when reviewing applications and providing recommendations. The Illinois State statutes and the Geneva City Code allow the Planning and Zoning Commission to carry out the following responsibilities, including but not limited to: to prepare and recommend to the city council changes in the official plan as may be deemed necessary by city council or by the Planning and Zoning Commission; to give aid to officials in the city charged with direction of projects for improvements embraced within the official plan; to further making of such improvements and generally promote the realization of the official plan; to hear and make recommendations to city council on applications for special permits, including planned unit developments; and to review the potential impacts a new development may cause regarding but not limited to traffic, parking, stormwater, and land use. Specifically regarding Agenda 5A, requested special use for a concealed personal wireless communication tower, no local government may regulate the placement, construction, and modification of personal wireless service facilities on the basis of environmental effects of radio frequency emissions per Section 332(c)(7) of the Federal Communications Act. This means that the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission does not and will not consider testimony or make recommendations to city council regarding the impact of radio frequency emissions. If members of the public choose to testify discussing this topic, they will be kindly reminded to focus on comments on issues that can be considered before the commission, particularly those related to special use sought by the petitioner. The special use requirements relevant to the matter in the public discussion and debate are identified on the board on the meeting room out in front and can be found online at www.geneva-il.us. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Scott so he can further emphasize that point.
So just briefly, he's outlined the law, and it is one of those things that it's unique to our government, that we have both a federal and a state system and a local system. And the federal government under the Telecommunications Act of 1996 has done what's called preempting our authority to be able to consider the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions in making any of our decisions. And that is just the law. And so we cannot consider frequency emissions, health, and environmental concerns, and that is something, and that's just the way it is. And so what will happen is if you're concerned about that, we will rule you, I've instructed the chairman to rule you out of order. That's not germane, it's not something that we will consider. I will remind everybody here that that's not something that we legally can take into consideration, and we will move on from there. And so we're not trying to limit anyone's ability to speak or raise concerns that they feel are important. Unfortunately, this just is not the forum for that. And that may be, for those of you that are concerned about those issues, that may be frustrating, but welcome to the United States of America.
All right, thank you very much for those comments. Okay, so following the end of the public testimony, the petitioner will have an opportunity to answer questions or respond to any comments made from members of the public. The public hearing will then be closed, followed by the commission deliberation on the requests. In order to help reduce background noise, I remind all commissioners joining virtually to please mute themselves except when they are addressing the commission. Commissioners joining virtually will also need to state their name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay, so that's the initial statement of how we're going to run the meeting. Are there any questions? Okay, very good. So hearing none. Celeste, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Evans? Evans, aye, present. Okay. Holman?
Holman, present.
Manaschil?
Manaschil, present.
Mead?
Mead, here.
Slivka?
Slivka, here.
Stocking?
Stocking, here.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is approval of this evening's agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion to approve. Slivka?
Mead?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And then the next item is approval of the minutes of the May 13, 2021 meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve. Mead?
Second. Slivka?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we'll move on to the public hearings. The first one, again, is 5A. It's zoning text amendment. This is continued from our last Planning Commission meeting on May 13, 2021. It's a text amendment to Section 11-6e-2, permitted uses to add drugs and cosmetics store to the list of permitted uses in the B-3E Business District, and a text amendment to Section 11-12-4, permitted signs in zoning districts to allow electronic message board in the B-3E Business District. The location is East State Street between Kane and Harrison Street, and the applicant is Bill Bush of Geneva Pharmacy LLC. I believe, Chayton, you have some additional items on the record and to summarize some of the findings that we wanted from the last hearing.
Do we want to open the public hearing first?
Oh, do we officially move and open that? Yeah, I guess we do. So we need to reopen the hearing.
The hearing was not closed, it was continued.
It was continued, yes.
So if we need to make any motion, it would just be a motion to continue with it.
Yeah. But I think we've, well, we stated we wanted to move it to this date and this time, so I think we're good.
Okay. So since the May 13 meeting, we've added a couple items that I'll mention. So we have updated the staff analysis regarding this specific topic, and then we've also added updated sign renderings of the Geneva Pharmacy project, and that is included in the staff analysis as a detachment.
Okay. And from what I recall, the two major points that we needed some additional information on was special permit versus allowed, and then there was some discussion on a monument sign versus monument sign. I think those are the two primary, if I'm not mistaken, the two primary issues that were still outstanding.
Yeah. And I can kind of go over the staff report real quick, just to, you know, make sure everybody's on the same page and kind of refresh our memories from our last meeting. But Scott, as Chairman Stocking mentioned, the commission had a few concerns about the text amendments as proposed. Regarding the drugs and cosmetics store addition as a permitted versus a special use, the concerns were mainly, you know, the commission wanted to provide additional oversight to review this type of use in the B-3E District. Also, there was a concern about just larger-scale development overtaking this distinctive area where businesses have repurposed single-family homes for their businesses. Regarding the electronic message board signs, the concerns were mainly about the frequency of the signs occurring along this portion of the East State Street corridor, in addition to the look of the signs. But based on additional research, we wanted to highlight the following information for the commission to consider, and as I mentioned, this is all in the staff report. So regarding the permitted, you know, regulating the drugs and cosmetics store as a permitted versus a special use, the current intentions and permitted uses of the B-3E District seem to be more restrictive than what is detailed in Geneva's current comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan suggests a wider variety of commercial uses would be acceptable for this area. Regarding the uses in the district, will not necessarily determine the outcome, or excuse me, regulating the uses in the district will not necessarily determine the outcome of the building's design or property development. Developers are not required to repurpose existing single-family homes in the district. Developers may tear down the single-family homes and/or consolidate lots for redevelopment, regardless if the use is permitted or special. If the goal is to preserve the residential scale of the district and repurpose existing former single-family homes, regulating the use is not the way to execute this vision. Categorizing this use as a special use would allow additional review and oversight for the commission, but this is one means to an end. Certain non-residential developments within the city already require site plan approval by the commission where this type of review can take place, and the situations are detailed in the report, the staff analysis. Permitted use, or I'm sorry, principal uses permitted or special in the B-3E, which will have a gross floor area of 5,000 square feet or more, require approval of a special use. Therefore, larger-scale developments in this district which meet this threshold would already need to go through additional review by the commission. Typically, land uses are classified as special use if said land use may cause some type of adverse impact to the surrounding uses. It is not anticipated that the inclusion of drugs or cosmetic stores to the B-3E District would generate an adverse impact on the surrounding uses or character of the commercial corridor. So moving on to electronic message board signs, the commission expressed concerns about the frequency at which electronic message board signs could be placed along this portion of the East State Street corridor. There's not been an overwhelming frequency of the placement of these signs within other districts where the sign is allowed, and this is not regulated either. In total, there are 12 zoning lots formed between the 18 parcels in the B-3E District fronting East State Street. Each zoning lot can have one freestanding sign not exceeding 10 feet in height, where the proposed electronic message board sign could be incorporated into these freestanding signs. This means that a total of 12 electronic message board signs could be incorporated into existing or new freestanding signs in the district. The commission has three options when it comes to the consideration of this text amendment. The commission may, one, disapprove as presented, two, approve as presented, or three, approve as presented with revisions. The commission seemed interested in exploring approval with a revision focusing on limiting the proliferation of electronic message board signs in the district. This could be accomplished through allowing this type of sign on zoning lots which meet a certain criterion, such as a minimum street frontage along East State Street. This breakdown of criterion and the number of signs in which could be allowed is illustrated in Table 1 in the revised staff analysis. Using this criterion, the commission could set a minimum frontage required for the zoning lots along East State Street in order to erect electronic message board signs, and thus limiting the frequency of the signs. So ultimately, took a look at it again, and that's, you know, our refined analysis, so we'd be happy to answer any questions from the commission or the public.
Very good. Any questions? Yes, John?
Scott, and Chayton, I like the idea of limiting the frequency by adding a condition as to minimum frontage on State Street. My feeling is with several, I'm referring to Page 8 of 10 in the staff report, referring to the, a number of the lots have 60-foot widths. If you had every lot had a freestanding monument sign and electronic message boards, which is unlikely, but could happen over time, I feel that would be too busy, quote-unquote, as far as how many signs are competing with each other for drivers and pedestrian units' attention.
They'd probably be hard to see.
Right, right. But, so if you set the minimum State Street frontage to something like 100 feet, that would allow five of the eight, five of the 12, I guess it is? Five of the 12 zone lots to have signs. But in the future, someone could combine a couple 60-foot lots, or 60 and a 75, and enable to, and they'd be able to install a sign like that. It would therefore decrease the overall number of lots and the potential for having too busy a visual noise out there, for lack of a better word. So I would be supportive of having discussion on that or seeing how the commissioners felt on adding a restriction there. It would, obviously, the applicant would be the first one, they would not limit them at all. They have 125 feet of frontage, and they would be allowed even with that restriction or condition.
Michael, do you want to speak on?
No, I had a similar thought, and I think I would maybe suggest that limit being 125 feet. If any pair of those small lots were combined, could be an additional three signs at that point, so at 125, it'd be a maximum of five signs. So I think that's, you know, that would be my thought on limiting the signage.
Okay. Anybody else? Sorry, I'm looking.
No, that's okay. So the, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this right. So businesses with less frontage on State Street would not be allowed to have the electronic signs. Is that what I'm understanding? So what are the parameters of the type of signs that they would be allowed to have?
So the maximum height in the B-3E District for freestanding signs is 10 feet, and then the total sign on each side, considering that it has two sides, you know, maybe facing east and west, would be 40 square feet, but then the electronic component of it cannot be greater than 20 square feet. So I think in Mr. Bush's example that he provided to the commission, he has an electronic component of the sign that does not exceed 20 square feet, and then the other portion of the sign doesn't exceed 20 square feet for the combined 40 square feet that's permitted.
Okay, so...
As a maximum.
So that's for a business that has a smaller amount of square footage on State Street?
So freestanding signs are allowed within the B-3E District.
Right.
But we'd just be limiting the electronic component of it.
Okay. I mean, I guess my only feeling is that if you're one of those businesses, it's going to feel a little like, why didn't I get the same opportunity for a sign that everybody else got? You know, for, I mean...
For the electronic part of it, yes.
Yeah. I mean, you're fighting for that dollar as much as everyone else, so I guess, I don't know what... And that would be a lot of busyness, you know, to your point, so, I don't know, I guess I feel like...
Those are the things we have to consider when we're trying to go about changes in the ordinance. So, yeah, I mean, that's what, kind of, I mean, again, some of the things that were brought out in the last meeting was like, again, just because of the small frontages along this route, I mean, there potentially could be a lot of signs out there.
A lot of signs, yeah.
And with, with electronic signs, they're busy, so like, it just, I just wonder if they'd even be visible or effective after a while if there were so many of them. So that's kind of what we were trying to get at, trying to strike a balance, particularly on this stretch of State Street where there's just small frontages. Yeah, John?
And to address that concern, I, you know, what we could do is talk about what the frontage would need to be, and I'd suggest it 100, Michael suggests it 125. If you reduced it even to 80, you could, you'd allow more lots to potentially have it. The two 60-foot lots on the south side and two on the north side, they'd have to combine, someone would have to combine them, repurpose the use in order to be able to achieve that, but you'd be reducing the number of have-nots, so to speak, without versus, you know, the folks that couldn't by right initially have them now, the way it's zoned. I don't know, that's just something to consider if we want to try to balance that, so.
Anna, Mim, do you have anything you want to add to this? Apparently not.
Nothing here.
Okay. So, okay, so there's that, and then...
I did have a question.
Yes.
For the applicant. Mr. Bush, thank you for the markup and mock-up of the sign. I think that's very helpful. I was curious, is it your intention to raise the existing pylon sign and install a monument sign like this with your electronic board? That's the intention, correct?
So the existing pylon sign will need to be removed
Okay.
...in order to accommodate the improvements that are proposed to be made by IDOT
Okay.
along this corridor of East State Street. So irrespective of whomever would have occupied this property
Right.
that existing pylon sign would have had to have been taken down and moved or removed completely. Our intention is to, if we were to move forward with a monument sign like that, is that there would be no pylon sign. The only reason we originally showed the pylon sign in our proposal was to keep the existing character and structure of the building. As the existing pylon sign was there, we wanted to try to have as light a footprint on the property as possible. I personally really liked the look of how the monument sign concept turned out when we looked at it, and I think it helps to integrate in some of the stone that you find in the exposed foundations along this corridor, and helps to really tie together the properties into the sign. So in answer to your question, the existing pylon would absolutely need to come down and would come down in replacement of this. This sign actually is going to move back away from the street so that that allows for the sidewalk to be replaced with a sidewalk that is further away from the street -
Right.
-allowing the street to be widened when that project is conducted. So not only is the sign being removed, but it's also being moved closer to the building, so hopefully that provides a little bit less distraction for the drivers and those who are passing by.
And the reason I asked that is, what I was going to suggest for discussion was, would we want to limit electronic signs to monument signs in this district because of, versus on existing pile, I don't know if there's any other pylon signs, I just don't recall.
There are. I'm sorry. Anyone speak at their turn.
Would we want to have those on monument signs only, which were much more attractive? We've got suggestions in the packet that we avoid pylon signs in this area, so I find it highly improbable we'll approve any additional pylon signs, so that...
No, not likely, no.
Yeah, right, so we're probably going to see monument signs. So if we refer to electronic signage on monument signs, that might further delineate what's acceptable in the B-3.
Well, in Mr. Bush's case, in this application, I think the monument sign actually is going to function better on the site.
Right.
It's going to be more visible than, because of the corner and how, I don't know the actual end geometry, but
Right.
I just feel that that site, the monument site, is just going to be more effective.
I agree, and I'm just wondering, because this does affect the other a lot of lots, do we want to delineate this to reference electrics, electronic signs would be allowed in monument signs along, in the B-3 District?
Yes, Rebecca.
So the sign that's currently there is not to code, so do we know how many signs in that little area are not to code to the current? I mean, because that might be, if we, if moving forward, we say, I like the idea of the monument signs, but if we're going to say that, then how many would we, are actually not to that code right now?
So we don't have an exact number, but I have noticed a lot of the existing signs in the B-3E District are more monument-type signs, low-profile. I think GenHo right now, they have a pylon sign that I did notice, but the others have that monument style that's in line with the code.
And to me, it feels like it's more in line with this design and development guidelines.
Right. And another thing for monument signs is, if a driver's attention is going to be diverted to something that's electronic to get their attention, at least it's in the field of sight of other traffic as opposed to looking up at a pylon sign and being distracted from the, from the driver's...
Yeah, I just think the scale in this area, if we're trying to do rehab of the existing buildings... buildings and stuff, it's just more in tune with that than putting a freestanding pylon sign out.
Any other comments from the commissioner on John's point? Okay, Mr. Bush, while you're standing, I think it's appropriate now to ask if you have any additional input based on what's been put before us.
Bill Bush, 501 East State Street, here representing Geneva Pharmacy. I appreciate the additional effort that staff has made to research the questions that arose out of last meeting's discussion. You know, we've presented our alternate concept for what the electronic sign could be with respect to the allowing for drugs and cosmetic stores as an approved use in the district. You know, we feel that we presented our case the last time. We're happy to respond to any questions that any of the commissioners or anyone in the public has for us with respect to that. But there's no new information on our side with respect to the petition for the approved use, nor for the electronic sign outside of our submission of the alternate concept, which we're actually in favor of the alternate concept. Once we worked it up and looked at it, we really think it ties into the look of the building.
Okay. Any other questions from the commissioner for Mr. Bush?
I just had one question. About having more to do with the anticipated drive-through. You talked about that last time being something that's going to, that application coming pretty quickly. So I was just wondering if that application were not approved, I mean, it doesn't really, it's not going to have an impact on whether or not you still follow through with these plans?
A drive-through for retail pharmacy, an independent retail pharmacy is, has proven to be a fairly critical element for success in our other locations that we operate in the greater Chicagoland area. We feel that it allows us to best service the community. Many community members have difficulty in walking in ambulatory settings where they have to get out of their cars and come up. And they really appreciate the opportunity to come through a drive-through. A mother with a sick kid doesn't want to get everybody out of the van to come into the pharmacy. They really appreciate the opportunity to drive through and pick up the medication. So it was one of our criteria when we were searching for a property, to find a property that physically allowed for the opportunity for a drive-through. We have already submitted to the City of Geneva our building permit application, which includes the establishment of a driveway. We have not yet submitted the special use request for the drive-through for the business, pending the outcome of the approved use. Obviously, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for us to submit for a drive-through if the use isn't approved for the property. So, but that submission is available and will be submitted very shortly after an outcome on the approved use of the property. But we do consider it to be a very important element of a retail independent pharmacy to have that capability. We know that Riley Drugs survived for 55 years here in the community without a drive-through. He had an incredibly fortunate support from the community and his base of patients. But in today's environment, as people are changing how they consume health care and how they interact with their pharmacy, it is proven for us at least to be a very essential element of a successful retail pharmacy going forward. Hopefully that answers your question?
It does. There were concerns brought up at the last meeting about that road, the small, the narrowness of the road that it comes out to. So that's why I was just wondering if it didn't get approved, if that would, you know, impact, you know...
When we were evaluating this particular property and when we were thinking about the impact that we would have on the property in different design configurations, we actually feel that by giving patients the option of multiple different ways of exiting the property, not only would they be able to exit to Woodlawn, they would potentially be able to exit to Harrison across Gen Ho's parking lot. They would potentially be able to exit back to State Street. We think we're giving them options that allow them to mitigate the impact of the traffic flow. Whether that State Street is backed up, they have an opportunity to use the side streets, whether that is they feel more comfortable making a right or left-hand turn from a different location than they do at that point along the State Street corridor. We felt that actually adding this driveway improved the overall egress out of that particular site because it didn't force everybody back onto State Street. It actually provided them with options that allowed them to be more safe in how they enter and exit the property. You know, and that's even when I was talking with Ms. Jenny Lee, who owns Gen Ho, about her customers on the weekends when we're closed. She was very comfortable with the idea of providing us with access, you know, across her parking lot because she knows that her patients are going to need that access as well. I mean, her customers are going to need that access as well during the busy periods for her restaurant. So we felt this was a very complimentary way to improve the access, ingress and egress out of that particular location.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Bush from the commissioners? Mim, do you want to speak? Mim? Do you want to speak?
I lost my audio there for a minute. I was trying to fix it.
That's why I recognized you.
No, I was trying to figure out what was wrong with my audio. I lost it. I'm good.
All right.
So I missed, I missed the last couple of minutes of whatever was said, but now it's back.
Okay, all right. Well, that's unfortunate, but, okay. It's more having to do with the drive-through, you know, that's down the rye. So we can deal with that later. Any other questions for Mr. Bush before I let him go? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so now I'm going to, oh, John, go ahead.
This is not for Mr. Bush, but I think the other issue that we wanted to touch on was whether or not the use of drugs and cosmetic store should be permitted or should it be pursued under special use. And I appreciate the staff on page eight providing the dimensions of the lots because that's helpful. I would be supportive at this point of allowing it as a permitted use because I think it would be very difficult for any project of size to come in, even with consolidation of lots. So I think that the, and I think that the use being requested is more consistent with the, you know, the updated plan the city's put together, which is more recent in thinking and times than the B-3 conditions when they were first established. So I would be supportive of it as a permitted use versus special, as submitted.
Yes, as submitted. I think I, I follow, I agree with you. I think the, as staff pointed out, the 5,000-square-foot requirement, requiring a site plan, that covers it as well as the drive-through, which are my two major concerns. So those things are addressed, and I think we can move forward with a permitted use, at least from my perspective. I'm going to ask now for public, additional public comment. Anybody in the audience here to comment on this public hearing item? Not seeing any, I'm going to ask remotely if there is anyone who wishes to comment on this public hearing item on the text amendment to allow drug and cosmetic stores as a permitted use in the B-3E district and to allow electronic message boards in the B-3E district?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one hand raised. Mr. Rodney Nelson, I will proceed to unmute you. Please unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Good evening.
Evening.
Thank you all again for participating and providing your service. I got to say, I'm a little disappointed to hear that you had your mind made up before you heard my cogent arguments against it, but that's the way it goes. The other comment I have is, I wish that when projects come forward that are in a TIF district, that that information would be included in the packet of information that goes to the public. The TIF district's existence is acknowledged in the comprehensive plan, so it's not out of bounds in terms of what is covered by the comprehensive plan. And I do think it has influence on how things are presented, and it presents some identity of interest between staff who's charged with development. They're not charged with balancing the rights and prerogatives of the adjacent property owners as heavily as they are in favor of the developers, else they would be called something else besides community development. So with that aside, I think, as I look at it, there are three basic documents that I look at when it comes to these kinds of things. The, obviously, the municipal code, the zoning ordinance, and the zoning map. These two things are fairly specific and they change fairly often. And then there's the comprehensive plan, which also has a lot of specificity, but it doesn't change quite as often, and it also speaks to aspirations in addition to requirements. So it's interesting that Mr. True read the only sentence that I was going to read, so I won't read it again. I'll just tell you that it starts with, "Overall, the current intentions and permitted uses seem to be more restrictive than they should be." I'd like to take the opposite side of that proposition and try to convince you that, in fact, there's a lot of meaning and a lot of consistency in the B-3E language. And I think consistently applying the zoning rules is essential to have people have public trust in the process. So I think I told you last time that the special retail phrase occurs only once in the municipal code, and that's in the description of the B-3E zoning district. It occurs more often in the comprehensive plan, and I think it's important for you to note that. It occurs in several places. When we're talking about the B-1 Third Street Downtown District, my old office on Hamilton and Second is in a transitional mixed-use zone. And interestingly enough, the term specialty retail also occurs in that portion of the comprehensive plan. So it's not a throwaway term, and it was not included in the B-3E verbiage out of a whim or a mistake or anything else. I think it's a recognition of the unique characteristics of the older part of town where there are almost no uniformities. Every property is different. The sizes are sometimes substandard. The streets are substandard. So it's a very unique, even though it's a very small district. So I'd just like to walk you through briefly, if I can, some of the comprehensive plans, the comprehensive plan that relate to this. If you look at Figure 13 of the comprehensive plan, you'll notice that it's divided into functional subareas. And I think the staff relied heavily on this functional subarea concept when they advised that we can overrule the more stricter, narrowly-defined requirements of the municipal code. I'd just like to point out to you that this, this plot, or this plat, or this parcel where this building will go is a salient on the very edge of this D functional subarea. And things have changed since this was created. For example, the box A, which includes the transitional mixed-use portion of B-3E, has cut out of its northeast corner D. But when that was done, that was before Munchy Peas was created. So if you look today at this property and you look at the adjacent to the north property, which is only a few feet away, which is residential, and then you look across Woodlawn at the two old residential properties that are now used for commercial offices, you see that... And then you look across the street, and you see a dental office in a converted home. Directly across the street is actually still strictly a residence. It's also an older structure that probably dates to the Civil War era. There is one modern building across the street, but the other two buildings across the street are also either the old Benson's Grocery Store on the corner or another residential unit. So this property is isolated and more properly, in my mind, grouped with the adjacency of all these other uses that follow the guidelines of B-3E, of being a transitional mixed-use. East State Street is quickly becoming a linear parking lot. And if you look at the rest of that block between Woodlawn and Harrison, it's mostly parking lot. And if you look across the street at Lou's Jeep, it's mostly parking lot. This is not, as a resident of this neighborhood, what I'm aspiring for, for my neighborhood. The other thing that's drastically different in the comprehensive plan than what has come to pass is that Harrison Street has never been put through. And this creates a lot of difficulties navigating my neighborhood and getting access to Route 38. So I believe that the comprehensive plan, in fact, strongly supports the wording in B-3E, and it would be foolish to ignore that. Couple of other things. Again, if you look at the land use plan, you see the transitional mixed-use, which is more consistent with what this building is amenable to than the neighborhood corridor commercial, in which it's, the staff would like you to believe that it belongs to that category. I think it's clear that it's more analogous to the properties that I mentioned. And then there's the fact that the comprehensive plan, Figure 18, actually includes this property with the rest of the transitional mixed-use portion of B-3E in Area 1. This is the only property in Area 1, and I think correctly, has been identified as belonging to Area 1, where the design strategy is different. So a comprehensive plan puts it with the buildings that it's adjacent to. Everything in the comprehensive plan points to the fact that this should not be treated as a permitted use. And then the final thing I'd like to go through with you once again, although not exactly in the same form, is to emphasize to you the difference between B-3E and the rest of the 38 corridor on the east side. At Chrissy Avenue, the right-of-way is 100 feet of Route 38. It narrows down to 64 feet at Sandholm Street. And it progressively narrows as it goes further east. If you look at the next page in the CMAC, the congestion mitigation air quality grant that's supposed to fund the improvement in East State Street, you'll notice that the Harrison Streets right-of-way is only 47 feet wide. And this is the place where you're suggesting that the drive-through people can exit. It's ironic that School Street right-of-way, which doesn't lead to a school, although it once did, is 60 feet wide right-of-way, and Harrison Street, which does lead to a school, is only 47 feet. Also, you'll notice most of the streets are not, the pavement is not centered in the right-of-way. It goes to one side, creating very narrow parkways, and in some cases, no sidewalks on one side of the street. Somebody mentioned something about widening of the street. There's almost no additional right-of-way that will be obtained along this block where this, there's a very, very thin strip. At Kansas Street, the width is 83 feet. And there's going to be some loss of this property's corner because some of... corner, because some of it will be part of the right-of-way of the East State Street So basically, I'm very concerned about the safety of pedestrians in my neighborhood. In many places, the sidewalk is very close to the street, and in some places, it actually runs right to the curb. And in some of the side streets, there are no sidewalks at all, so a pedestrian doesn't have a lot of good alternatives. This is a big concern to me. So I would wish that you would not make this a permitted use in B-3E. I would strongly urge you, in this area of great congestion and high traffic, not to put distracting text signs. We banned texting in automobiles. Why do we want to add distraction? Detracts from safety, which to me is a much higher priority than any gains that might be obtained from the messaging. So I would wish that you would not permit this sign and not permit this use. And I'm very concerned that construction started before I virtually heard about this process, making me believe that it was a done deal. And I'm very concerned that you've separated this now from the drive-through, which we've just heard that it's absolutely crucial to have the drive-through, which makes me think that also is a done deal. It's just not building my confidence in the process here in Geneva. And I have the Dunkin' Donuts experience, where the Dunkin' Donuts project encroaches on the Route 38 right-of-way. Nothing was done about that. It's a violation of the criteria for granting of a special use. The retaining wall on the west side of that lot comes right up to the sidewalk on a very narrow street, so that a pedestrian can be pinned against that wall with nowhere to go. And that also is a violation of Geneva ordinances. I fear that the same thing is in store for us at this intersection, and I fear for the safety of the children going to school. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other additional public comment on this? There isn't any in this room, but is there anyone virtually who wishes to speak on this Okay, one more time. Anyone virtually who wishes to speak on this matter before the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing and enter into commission
There is a motion.
Evans, second.
It's like Mim beat you to it. Mim seconded. All those in favor? Oh, we need to do a roll call. Sorry, I gotta do a roll call on this, because it's the only way. So last please call a roll.
I can. Evans?
Evans, aye.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Matoskiel?
Matoskiel, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Chairman Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Okay, that passes.
All right, thank you.
One point of clarification, I think the applicant told us last time that he was starting demolition, which is very different than construction. So I think just from that perspective, then the activity we've seen on the site was something we've known about, and it's been delineated as demolition, which is something he had permitted...
Parts of the existing structure.
Right. There's no construction as to anything new there.
Dealing with a pharmacy or...
Correct.
Use of a pharmacy.
Correct. And I think what we've been talking about, as far as the electronic signs, serves to address the issue of distraction of drivers. The number of signs being limited with frontage... Correct me if I'm wrong, Jayden, but these are not scrolling signs. We're talking about signs that have a fixed message that can only be changed, I believe it's every five minutes. So there's not going to be activity or distracting movement that's going to... That serve to further distract drivers or pedestrians.
That's correct. The messages can only change every five minutes.
I think the point of the discussion is, do we want to limit the frequency of signs by frontage, and how much should that be? We've had suggestion of 100 foot, 125, and then Rebecca brought up a good point as to, what that does to the existing lot sizes. Do we want to further reduce that, or is there a room... The commissioners should come to some agreement before we make a motion, I think, so.
Oh, yeah, definitely, because there's been a couple items put forward. That, I think Rebecca had additional saying that we'd only allow animated signs in monuments signage.
We discussed about limiting them to monument signs only.
Only, right. Which, you know, we gotta despite that, too, so.
I'm open to reducing the frontage limitation to something that's acceptable to the balance of the commission myself, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, what was put out there in terms of the standard, I mean, I was, I think, around 120 feet, 125 feet. I'm not strongly leaning one way or the other. I think 120 would be adequate. That would then, again, as you pointed out earlier, if I do a lot consolidation, they would be allowed to have one. There's a couple 60-foot lots, so that might make sense in terms of our criteria to allow it that way.
The challenge with 60 feet, to address Rebecca's issue, is then you're getting signs 30 feet from the property line.
Yeah.
So if we reduced it to 80 or something, then at least you get... There's one other lot, or even the 75 footer. You'd have two additional lots in that one block that could have them arguably, right? But the 60-foot lot might be a little bit busy as far as the number of lit signs. So just curious what you might suggest, Rebecca.
I don't know. I just, you know, as a former business owner, you know, you think about that, how you're going to be able to compete with the other signs. If you're on this first block and you're 60 feet, and then the lot beside you is 250, you know, they've got a nice big sign, and you've got something else. You know, so you may not, you know, you may not be getting that visual presence that you're looking for.
They have an automated sign, you know, still helped by the ordinance.
They would have the same size sign. They just could not have an electronic message sign that could change.
It wouldn't be the same type.
Right.
Yeah.
But, you know, I mean, the balance of not having the busyness, I understand that as well. So, I mean, I'm comfortable with what you said, the 80. I don't know. Does that make it too busy?
I don't think so, because you... At that point, if you look at the diagram, you get one basically on each block, right, between the streets at that point.
Yeah, and overall.
You have two on the one, you've got Jen Ho, and you've got, then the pharmacy.
Yeah, the big lot, so that... Yeah, that might be a decent compromise.
The 80 feet?
80 feet. I don't know, anything else our commissioners feel about that? Yes, Michael?
Yeah, I mean, I'm still for less signs, excuse me, signs and more, you know, especially electronic signs. And I understand fairness to different property owners and tenants, but, I mean, that's a typical way that signage is usually allocated, based on frontage or square foot of area. And so that's a common way. But I guess in terms of the frontage, you know, if we... If you go down to 80 feet, then it really only changes if lots are consolidated. So, you know, how do you predict the future? So, you know, I guess from my perspective, I could be supportive of a lesser number.
At 80 feet, you'd have three on the north side of State Street and three on the south side of the existing 12. So half the lots, right?
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess I could be... I could live with 80.
I have a comment?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I think if we incorporate that language, that the electronic signs are only permitted as monument signs, and then you allow it at 80 feet, you've created an incentive to get away from the pylon signs and maybe even get rid of some of the ones that we have, and the overall effect might be a good one. I think that we need to think large-scale in terms of what we want the streetscape to be like. And if we want it to switch more towards monument signs, then those have to be available to more lots, as many lots as is reasonable to not get too busy. So for that reason, I would suggest making them available to the upper end of what we think is reasonable, rather than going in 125 feet.
So Mim, to clarify, are you saying you'd like them restricted, electronic signs restricted to monument signs?
Yes.
What were you headed to as far as frontage? I just...
What I'm saying is I would pick a, at the lower end, like the 80 feet, to me, sounds reasonable, because I want there to be the opportunity for as many lots possible as is reasonable visually to go to the monument sign route, rather than pylon signs.
Okay, understood.
Yeah, I think overall, that'll be the way we'd want to go along the stretch of State Street, so.
I don't have any other comments.
I don't have any other comments. Any other comments from the commissioners? Just want to make sure everybody has...
Question for Jayden. Will this be in the form of two motions, do you envision one for each text amendment, or as requested in, just for both motions, as conditioned?
I would recommend two motions.
Okay, that's fine.
One for the signs.
That's fine. You ready?
May I make a friendly suggestion about the monument sign?
Yes.
We don't define that in our zoning ordinance. We just have freestanding signs, which includes pylon signs, but if you said electronic message board signs could be incorporated, and a freestanding sign in the B-3 district that conforms to the East State Street design guidelines, because the design guidelines certainly do call for monument signs and call out pylon signs as discouraged. And that ties it directly to the planning documents, too, and there's a basis for it.
Okay, can you...
Can we structure that?
So freestanding signs in the B-3E district that conform with what did you say?
The East State Street design guidelines.
East State Street.
Then it's tied right back to that planning document.
Design guidelines. Okay, that's... Thank you.
Yeah, that should work.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion in accordance with Section 11-14-3 of the Geneva zoning ordinance, to request a text amendment to Section 11-60-2, permitted uses to add drugs and cosmetic stores to the list of permitted uses in the B-3 business district, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Do I have a second? Second, Slifka. Seceded by Slifka. Celeste, please call a roll.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Matoskiel?
Matoskiel, aye.
Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
Okay, that passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to request text amendment to Section 11-12-4, permitted signs in zoning districts, to allow electronic message board signs in the B-3E business district as... On freestanding signs in the B-3E district that conform with the East State Street design guidelines, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report.
Do we want to limit...
Further limiting, limited to those zoned lots with a minimum of 80 foot of frontage along East State Street.
80 foot of frontage, okay.
So two conditions. That's fine, okay. Do I have a second?
Slifka, second.
Thank you.
That's all, please call a roll.
Okay. Evans?
Evans, aye.
Halloman?
Halloman, aye.
Matoskiel, aye.
Okay. Mead?
Mead, aye.
Slifka?
Slifka, aye.
And Stocking?
Stocking, aye.
That passes.
All right, thank you, Celeste. So when's it going to council?
So this item will go to City Council on Monday, June 7th.
All right.
7:00 PM.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so our second public hearing item this evening is Item 5B. It's the Verizon Wireless Tower, a special use to allow a concealed personal service wireless communication tower in the B-5 business district. The location is 1749 South Randall Road. The applicant is Dolan, I believe that's how it's pronounced, Dolan Realty Advisors LLC. Clayton, you have some items in the record?
Yes, sir. So the contents of this file include an application for a special use filed by Melissa Olson of Dolan Realty Advisors LLC dated May 14, 2020, applicant's response to special use standards, breakpoint letter from Sabre Industries dated May 6, 2020, pre-and post-simulations for the tower location, sworn statement of location compliance dated June 25, 2020, Section 106 compliance letter dated August 12, 2020, site plans and engineering documents dated January 18, 2021, an analysis of the application from Citiescape Consultants dated April 19, 2021, an excerpt of the Geneva Comprehensive Plan, Section 7, Randall Road Corridor, balloon test photos taken May 3, 2021, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May 13, 2021, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on May 12, 2021 for tonight's public hearing, and a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet.
All right, thank you very much. We'll hear from the applicant at this time. Is he present, or is he remote?
I'm remote. My name is Doug Dolan with Dolan Realty Advisors.
Sir, sir, could you please turn up your volume a little bit?
I can.
Oh, sir, the testimony you're about to give, before we start, the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Please state your name again and your address for the record.
Sure, Doug Dolan, D-O-L-A-N, Dolan Realty Advisors, 450 Somerset Avenue, San Luis Valley, 63119.
Okay, thank you. You may proceed.
I do have a very short presentation with some slides, so if it's possible to share the slides, I think it'll aid in my presentation.
Well, let's hope so. Yeah, can you hear him?
I'm having a little problem. I don't know what it is, but...
Yeah, I have a little... Sir, do you have a microphone or some way to be a little clearer?
I do have a microphone, and it's... I'm not sure why.
Even an ugly headset that you can wear or something? I hate them. I hate those things. Just having a little difficulty hearing you in the room right now. I can't hear you at all now, you might be unmute.
Okay. Okay, are you able to hear me now?
A little better.
All right, I'll try and enunciate as well as I can. I'm not sure why, I do have a microphone, and it's a separate microphone, so there might be something associated with that. If you had my presentation up, if it's able to be seen.
We can see your presentation, yes.
Okay, let me full screen on this, and presentation mode. Okay, I'll speak as loudly as I can. Again, the proposal is for a stealth telecommunications tower at 1749 South Randall Road, and again, I'm Doug Dolan with Dolan Realty Advisors. Our company gets involved once Verizon Wireless network engineers have determined that a particular area, in this case, the city of Geneva, is in need of a new cell site, due to many reasons, one of which is that the existing cell service is projected to be degraded over time. In other words, the number of new users coming on the system is creating a capacity problem for both the tower to the north and the tower to the south, which will result in degraded and dropped calls and poor service in this section of Geneva. Were you able to hear that?
Yep.
Okay. So what's appearing on the screen is a search ring. This is issued to us by Verizon Wireless, and the yellow pin in the middle represents the center of the problem area. Our proposed site is in the retail shopping center, and as indicated by the red arrow. As is the case with many areas like Geneva, we have a strip of commercial properties surrounded by residential areas. Our aim and goal is to find a commercial area within that search ring that allows for distance to residential properties. In this case, there is a narrow strip of commercial properties about 500 feet deep, so that the property you select is about 300 feet from Randall Road and 200 feet from the closest residence. What's on the screen is a RF map, which indicates the existing coverage. So the red symbols at the top and the bottom of the screen represent existing Verizon cell sites. The red arrow indicates the area of our proposed site. This is equidistant between the two existing cell towers, which are both approximately one mile to the northeast and one mile to the southwest. Again, it's important to note that this cell site not only will improve coverage to this area, and we did read the comments that some residents do have good coverage from Verizon, but important thing to remember is that the Verizon network engineers have already indicated this is a high priority site due to the volume in this area. So ones who have good coverage now will not be able to enjoy good coverage in the future without this cell site. So this is before, without the cell site, and this is after, with the cell site, which provides a comprehensive both coverage and capacity to the city of Geneva. Again, I noted this will not only help this particular area, but help the entire network in Geneva. This is a write-up done by the network engineer at Verizon Wireless, and Verizon Wireless has insufficient in-residence coverage in many parts of the neighboring property, and is in need of more network capacity. New site near Randall and Glen Eagle, and that's a site name that they use, doesn't necessarily denote the exact intersection that we are, but it does denote an intersection near the center of the problem area. It's needed at the proposed location to improve coverage in surrounding areas along Randall Road. The proposed site is an optimal location, which will help offload capacity to the exhausted neighborhood site one mile to the north and the site one mile to the south. This is especially important for reliable E911 calls, reliable in-residence and in-building coverage along Randall Road, and faster 4G speeds. Again, network capacity is the primary driver for this site, and without it, the city of Geneva will begin experiencing problems with cell phone coverage. Public safety is an essential part of network coverage. Eighty-five percent of calls now, 911 calls, are placed from wireless phones. Seventy-four percent of American homes, this grows monthly, are wireless only. The preferred option for buyers of new homes is wireless. There's, you read the comments about properties and new buyers and perhaps reluctance of new buyers knowing there's a cell tower nearby, but finding the opposite is true, that new buyers do not plan to install landlines in their phones, but their preferred, by far, option is to remain wireless. Additional cell sites in the neighborhood will allow emergency providers to help triangulate the location of the E911 callers. So with each additional cell site, it helps identify and locate the caller who's in trouble. The city attorney was right to bring up the federal exemption on radio frequency safety, as was mentioned by the chair. However, this lives in the minds of many residents who just are not, who haven't understood it, and there's a lot of information available on the internet, and it can be confusing and scary and fearful. So I do want to take a couple, make a couple of points here that I think will help address those concerns. Each of the wireless carriers is regulated by the FCC. The measurements on the ground, the signal on the ground is less than 1/10 of 1% of the FCC limit. In other words, a cell tower operates about 100 watts. Some of the big, you know, radio stations in Chicago operate at 50,000 watts. These are considered low-power transmitters. Ground measurements taken at the base of the tower is similar to a home Wi-Fi system or a baby monitor. Police, fire, and first responders use data provided by the telecommunications sites. The federal government, as was stated earlier, has deemed telecommunications sites to do the public. For additional information, we advise going to reliable websites like the FCC, like OSHA, and like the American Cancer Society. The proposal was originally a traditional monopole, which has exterior antennas and an exterior platform, so it's not as stealth-looking. In working closely with the Citiescape Consultants, which is the third-party telecom consultant hired by the city of Geneva, it was relayed to us that a stealth pole is preferred. A traditional 80-foot monopole is permitted, used, is a permitted use under the Convention of Use Amendment, and they made, at one point made it clear that a stealth pole is preferred. So we changed our design, and if we did go stealth, it permitted 100-foot maximum height, which allows, that height allows the network to work properly in Geneva. So we made a stealth pole. This is a single pole, there's no guy wires, there's no FAA lighting, and all the antennas and cables are concealed within the pole. So what you'll see, we can paint it typically a dark gray color, it does not reflect light, and again, as mentioned, there's no FAA light on top, which means it'll be completely dark at night. The equipment at the base, while shown here for clarity, will be completely concealed by a brick facade wall, so there'll be no equipment visible on the parking lot or to any of the residents, but it'll be concealed behind a brick wall. Part of the ordinance, which we've complied with and have worked with city planners and consultants, and the application date referenced earlier by the planner reminded me that this started in May of, not this year, but May of last year. So we've worked closely with the city and the consultants to develop a plan that we feel is legally in compliance with your ordinance. Attached is a photo of a red balloon, which was flown, and we have more photos, and I know city staff also has additional photos, of the proposed height. It's important to point out that we did the balloon test twice, both of which were on windy days, and both of which pushed the balloon perhaps 20 feet lower than its actual height. But this is approximately between, this is between full height and 20 feet lower than the actual height. The pole will be no wider than that red balloon. The red balloon is three feet wide, so the entire tower will be less than three feet wide. Again, painted a dark gray or a dark blue in color. Oftentimes, we're asked what it will look like from the primary road, Randall, and it's hard to see, but you do see the red balloon in the distance. Again, planning staff has additional photos of this in their report. In summary, the stealth design was specifically chosen to protect the character and integrity of the community. The stealth will be built to accommodate four carriers. We also heard concerns from residents that gee, if you allow this tower, will that open the door to other towers? We'll build and design this tower to conceal other carriers such as AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and there's a new carrier coming called Dish Networks. These canisters, again, which are completely concealed within the pole, are designed to conceal the equipment of future carriers, reducing the need for any other cell tower in the area. This coverage will provide reliable wireless service, essential to local residents, business owners, public safety officials, and visitors to the city of Geneva. The proposal will allow Verizon and others to provide the critical service when needed. The city of Geneva's consultant, Citiescape Consultants, stated, quote, "Verizon's claim of a need for new facility in the area between the two existing sites in order to solve a capacity issue is genuine." And that's a quote from their report. Now, this is in consultation with Verizon, and with the engineer, and with the network engineers, due to the number of comments received from the public on concerns about the appearance, property values, open the door to more towers, health concerns, noisy generator, oh, I shouldn't add the noisy generator, there will be a generator purely backup power generator in case of an outage in the area. So if the neighborhood goes dark, the cell service will continue. They also mentioned about existing landscaping buffer in poor condition. We'd also agree to work with the property owner to replace any dead trees in the landscape buffer. So this, in summary, what, in consultation with Verizon, we've agreed, and there was a comment made by the city's consultant, why not a tree? This is a specially-designed cell tower pine tree that's designed for cellular antennas to provide coverage and capacity. This is an actual site that was built in the city of Ladue, which is a suburb of St. Louis. It's exactly 85 feet tall, tip of the branch, and it conceals AT&amp;T and T-Mobile's equipment within the foliage. What we've agreed, in addition to our application, we've agreed as the applicant to accept a condition under a special use permit approval that will limit the tower height to 85 feet. So instead of 100 feet, we'll lower it by 15 feet, and we'll switch from a single pole to a pine tree concealment method, which would be, which is shown on the screen here. So in summary, we would reduce it by 50, we'd agree in advance as a condition of our special use permit, that we'd reduce it to 85 feet, and we would switch to a pine tree. Initially, didn't go with a pine tree because we're building on an asphalt parking lot of a shopping center, which didn't, at first, I didn't think it was conducive to a pine tree, but in reviewing 40-plus comments received from area residents, they're really concerned about the appearance of the cell site. So to that end, due to the existing landscape buffer around the shopping center, we feel a pine tree, especially from the residents, especially from the roads in the back of the property, will conceal the equipment and the cell tower. So that concludes my presentation, and hopefully be available for any questions.
All right, thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, questions, follow-ups for Mr. Dolan? Yes, John?
I've got several. First of all, for city staff, did I, I believe I just heard that an 80-foot monopole would already be allowed by right on this site? Is that what, I thought I just heard him say?
A new tower requires a special use regardless if it's concealed or not concealed, but allowable height increases to 100 feet if it's concealed.
Okay. And what the applicant is offering now is 85-foot as a pine tree?
Right.
Did I, I'm not sure, Mr. Dolan, did I also hear you were offering to replace dead foliage and trees along Bent Tree?
Yes, we read the many comments that came in from our advertisements and notices, and a couple of which indicated that there were some, the landscape buffer between the residents and the shopping center needed attention, specifically replacing some dead trees. So we would work with the property owner to replace any dead trees in this, of this monopole.
All right, thank you. I have several questions. Many of these are comprised or derived from reading the application as submitted, and I'm still processing your offer, so, excuse me if these are a little bit off-base, but you mentioned that the three-foot diameter balloon was wider than the pole at any point. What is the exact diameter at the base and at the top?
It's about 27 inches at the top, so the top canister is about 27 inches, and the bottom is about, about close to, close to three feet or 36.
Okay, thank you. And this isn't pertinent to the land use, but I'm just curious, who is the landlord and who is the tenant? Is Dolan a third party that is an intermediary between the tenant, which is a service provider, and the landlord is the landowner of the shopping center?
That's correct. Yes, the landowner is the landlord of the shopping center. We entered into an agreement with the shopping center owner, and we, and I am, will serve as the developer of the property and Verizon as a tenant on the tower.
So as and when additional users, up to three additional users, are incorporated into the tower, will they become co-tenants under the lease?
Yes, correct.
Okay. When the lease expires, is the tenant or the developer, the fee developer in this case, required to return the site to the current condition?
Correct. This is designed to be a long-term asset to the community, yes. At the end of the lease term, we remove the pine tree and we restore the parking lot to the condition in which it was in prior to us being there.
Okay, and that begs the question, because of the changing technology we have, it's not beyond possibility that the lease could still be operative, but the technology could pass up this pole design, and the pole could be still under lease but not used. If that was the case, is there a recapture right for the landlords, or an ability to cause this to be removed if it's not being used for a period of time under the lease? cause this to be removed if it's not being used for a period of time under the lease?
Let me make sure I understand. So if there's a time in which the technology changes and the site is no longer used, then Verizon and others would terminate that lease, would not continue a lease on something that no longer provides value to the community.
Okay.
So they terminate the lease, at which point, with all the leases terminated, we would then terminate our lease with the property owner and remove it and restore it.
Okay. Thank you. Now, getting a little bit to the process, Dolan, as I understand it, and I just did a little bit of research online, is a mobile communication site selection company based in suburban St. Louis, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So I was a little bit surprised, or a little bit concerned, to some of the staff's comments in their report related to this recommendation coming forward, but all that was contained with it was an affidavit from a Verizon radio frequency engineer that said that this is, this technology is needed, versus the requirement, I believe, under the city's ordinances, that you go through the laundry list or the list of preferred designs and provide a case-by-case background on what sites were considered, how each of those designs could fill this gap in potential or future gap in service, and why those were not preferred or would not work here, in coming up with this design, which happens to be, if I read this correctly, near the bottom of the list of preferred alternatives for providing cell service to a community.
Yeah, I can address that in a couple ways. One, our preferred is always to co-locate on an existing tower. So if there's an existing site in our search area, by far the easiest path is to co-locate on the existing site. So, and your ordinance asks us to lease land from property owned by the city of Geneva as the next best. And then third, from a private commercial property owner. So there weren't no properties that we're aware of in the search ring owned by the city of Geneva that were offered to us as a possible candidate. So I think that's the case. And in addition, I would say that we did, and there's a more exhaustive planning commission report, and a more exhaustive, your consultant report, which does show six other sites that were considered by us, and there is a legal requirement to show that why this is the best available site. And we, and in that report, we show why six other sites did not work, one of which is a 20-foot-high rooftop, one of which was a cell tower in which Verizon already has antennas on. So we go through each of those sites and show why those sites would not work. So again, our preference, a rooftop site, we do a ton, you know, speaking of public safety, we do a ton on hospitals, we do a ton on universities, we go a ton on residence halls. I meant to make that comment earlier about public safety and the safety of the antennas. These have been reviewed by hospital boards, by universities, and they choose to place antennas on top of their buildings. So these are deemed safe. But yeah, we, this is one and only place that works for Verizon Wireless.
Following on that question, though, there are, it's referenced in these, in the hierarchy of potential solutions to a gap in coverage, one is called a small cell facility, and I'm not nimble in thinking about this stuff, but I looked at some pictures, and they're shorter towers along a streetscape, that I'm sure that because they're shorter, their coverage is not as broad. You'd have to do several of those, but they might be less visually intrusive to the skyline.
Yeah, it would require, a small cell is not designed for this type of retail and residential areas. Typically, small cell goes into dense urban areas. That's primarily how that, how those are, work.
Okay.
This site was designed for a macro site, but even if it were to be designed for small cell, it would take between 30 and 40 to 50 small cell sites to replicate this one macro cell site. And they are smaller, they're between 30 to 40 feet, they don't have the capacity, and they don't have the coverage. So you have to basically build out a whole network of sites, including the residential areas, including the commercial areas. But this one macro site will take the place of many, many small cells.
Okay, that's a fair point. But you mentioned there'd be, I think you said 30 to 40 of these. If you were to do that, where would those be? In people's parkways, or would they be, you know, throughout the neighborhood and along Randall Road?
Yeah, often along Randall Road and in public rightways. So they can be, you know, probably get, with more research as well, but I can tell you for a fact, they go in public rightways, which includes residential streets, secondary streets, and primary streets. So anywhere with the public rightway, with the utility pole, a light pole, those are standard areas that they co-locate on.
Okay. Next question I have is, we state that up to, there'll be up to four users, as we've previously discussed, but it's also stated that should we add an additional user, or additional two or three users? There's not enough, there's probably or potentially not enough room within the screened area at the base to include the housing for the equipment. Is there a mechanism in place under your lease to lease additional parking spaces from this current landlord, or will you have to search for those? If the landlord's not willing to give up more parking spaces, what would be, what would be done to accommodate those other users? Because the pole as designed needs to be able to accommodate those users, which is stated in the city's desire when they do these poles, that there's a minimum of four users, correct?
That is true. And we just show what we're building. We didn't show the entire leased compound area. So the point is, yes, we leased a larger area than what we're building, but we didn't want to take up additional parking spaces without the second or third tenant being present, which may happen two years down the road, five years down the road, you just don't know. So we just are building out three, taking three parking spots. The landlord is interested in leasing us additional spaces when the additional tenants are to come. And again, it'll all be concealed within the pole. Residents, neighbors will not even know that a second tenant is there. And in addition, city staff had pointed out that the shopping center has more than enough parking that's needed. I think there's perhaps 30 additional parking spots over and above what the code requires. There is room for expansion.
Right. And I saw that, and I believe there is capacity there. So did you just say, though, that you have an agreement, or you are leasing additional spaces, you're just not building them out at this time?
Correct. Yeah, we've leased additional parkings.
Okay.
We're only building out, we're only building out a compound to accommodate Verizon.
Okay.
If AT&amp;T come along, we'd expand the compound and take another parking spot or two.
Okay. All right, here's a question, it might be a technical question, I don't know if, but it's, the staff report and the RF engineer's affidavit refers to permitted-use sites. Are there permitted-use sites in Geneva? I didn't think there were.
Be the existing towers, so the water towers that we have.
Oh, so it would be a co-location, or just, okay. All right. Thank you. Next question, there's a reference to a capacity utilization graph that's typically provided as referenced in the Cityscape report, but was not provided in this instance. Is there a reason that wasn't provided, and should we have that to digest while we're making a decision for a recommendation?
I missed, I was clicking a button on my screen, and I missed the very first part of the.
That's okay, that's okay. There's reference to something called a capacity utilization graph in the Cityscape report letter that is referenced as typically provided to cities and commissions when decisions like this are being made, but it was not in this instance. Is that something we, that, is there a reason it wasn't provided, and should we have that to help us make this decision?
So I've been involved with hundreds of poles for cell sites, but I'm not familiar with that term. I just, I do know that the site is needed for capacity reasons, and there is both coverage and capacity. So, and the RF engineer did sign the affidavit, you need capacity in the area, but I'm not aware of a specific graph that outlines that, other than the propagation map that was provided in our, in our report.
Okay. Reference, another question, referenced also in the Cityscape letter report is the National Environmental Policy Act, the NEPA.
Yes.
Typically, there's a NEPA, why hasn't the NEPA review report been completed by now? And I understand, in reading this, it takes another 120 days to get that, and Cityscape is recommending that if this moves forward, we make out a condition of approval for this application.
And we would be accepting of that condition if it was voted to be approved for the NEPA report, which is basically Environmental Protection Agency. They look at waterfowl, they look at birds, they look at any underlying areas that might be of environmental concern, wetlands. And we do have that report, it just did come in. It takes about six months to get, but we do have it, and we could, at any rate, will furnish it. I don't think it'll provide any more information than for a zoning board to rule on, but, you know, it will, by the way, the FCC requires it before Verizon were to attach antennas to the pole.
Okay. I was just curious why it wasn't already done. It sounds like it just got done, and I personally would be comfortable if it was found acceptable by city staff as they reviewed it.
Consultant, yeah.
Thank you for patiently walking through my questions.
Sure.
Anything else from the commissioners at this time for Mr. Dolan?
I have a question.
Yes, Rebecca?
I was curious about the, I kept making reference to the 911 calls and the, so I was sort of looking like, looking for a report or something that was from the city or from someone saying that that was really important, just someone besides the applicant?
Hmm?
To kind of bring that home, I guess, like.
Yeah. I mean, Mr. Dolan, you want to respond to that question? Mr. Dolan?
Oh, you wanted to like me to respond? Okay. Certainly, the 911 coverage is essential. In fact, AT&amp;T has a separate first responder network dedicated in case of emergency to go with those callers. So Verizon also needs an improved capacity to handle in case of emergency, to handle the calls that will swarm the network in case of an emergency. But as indicated earlier, too, the additional cell site will be able to isolate the caller who's in trouble, be able to isolate the location of the caller with more precision, especially if they can't talk, or they can't, or a car accident, it'll determine the location better.
Yeah. I just was wondering if there was a local report from, you know, the city or some services that's saying that this is needed, you know, that the current capabilities are not enough.
We don't have that report, no.
Okay.
So like from the 911 center, or from the police or fire department?
Yeah, from the fire department, saying, yes, we really need this to be able to do our jobs, to be able to, you know, that's kind of what I was looking for.
From the city's perspective.
From the city's perspective.
Have they heard anything?
Yes.
Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Following up on Rebecca's comment, which I think is a good one, you talk about the need for capacity, especially for people in the residences. Has there, is there any documentation of people and residents complaining about a lack of service, especially as we switch to more at-home workers over the past year? Other than thinking technically that it's not adequate? We didn't get any comments from residents saying, hey, I would like this because I would have better service.
Yeah, this is a site that network engineers, much like power, like let's say you run out of power in a newer area, the power companies can forecast where they're going to need power and where they need a new service. The network engineers have said, this is an area, without a new cell site, will begin to experience drop calls, poor coverage, and capacity issues. And not just in this area, but the other two cell sites that are very close to or in Geneva, they will also begin to suffer outages, and they call, they call them breaking, that the sectors will start breaking, which means there's more callers on the network than the system can handle. So the network engineers at Verizon look out in advance and recognize that a problem is developing, and it can take a year or two to get a new site built. And so they look out in advance prior to the problem being there.
Okay, so it's not a current issue, you're anticipating this issue in the future?
It is weak coverage area currently, as shown on the propagation map. We have a site a mile to the north and a site a mile to the south. So we're right, this area is equidistant, is right in between two existing cell sites. So this is a weaker coverage area, and to the north or to the south, which means slower data speed, weaker cellphone coverage.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners at this time for Mr. Dolan? All right. Not hearing any, I will move on to the next phase, which is hearing from the public. I will go again through the order in which we received people signing up for comment today. We'll start with the people in the room first, and then when we finish with everyone that's present, we will then move on to the virtual portion of the hearing. So with that, first person on the list is Robert Wagner, I believe.
So I'm Robert Wagner, 1911 Crystal Tree Court. First of all, thank you very much, I appreciate this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm pretty much going to go on a script, and then to address some of Mr. Dolan's comments, I'm going to go off-script, so I might fumble through that a little bit, but if you could just bear with me. So I'm a 25-year resident of Geneva. I've lived at the same location for the entire, that entire time. It's the cul-de-sac immediately east of Bent Tree, so on the other side of Bent Tree in the berm, that's where this tower would go. I'm here to address standards number one and five, due to the impact on the, of the proposed tower, on Geneva's comprehensive plan and the character of the area. Whether I'm in my backyard, on my deck, in the park, or I walk out my front door and I look to the west, the first thing I'm going to see is a tower. An 85-foot pine tree compared to 30-foot, 35-foot trees in the line, I'm not sure that does anything for me. I'm still seeing the same thing, which isn't good. So I'm submitting a paper copy of a petition that over 220 residents signed, so we have the petition as well as the signature pages. I believe this, I've submitted this before, I don't know if it's in your packet, so I'd like to submit this.
Thank you, sir.
The petition is basically saying the neighboring residents of this area don't agree that this is not a violation of the comprehensive plan, or is it make this tower, however it's concealed, out of character? Now, I, I'm going to reference a picture that you should have in your packet that shows the tower from many different perspectives, and it makes it look like it's as tall as the light standards that are in the parking lot. Then we have the balloon test, and we've seen several pictures of that before. What I like to do now is I have color copies for all the members here, what that balloon looks like at a different perspective.
You send it to me, I'll distribute it. Are they all grouped?
And what these pictures are going to depict is how impactful this tower would be from different perspectives than you might have seen before. It's the balloon test that was conducted May 3rd. The first balloon test failed because of wind conditions, but the top picture, which you're going to notice, that's a picture from the cul-de-sac on which I live. So when I had mentioned going directly out of my door and I look west, this is what I would see. So, Mr. Dolan, I don't know if you could see that or not. So if the balloons represent approximate width of the tower that was proposed, and now I have a pine tree I'm looking at, an 85-foot, 100-foot compared to 30, 35-foot that was recognized as the current trees that are on the berm, again, the visual impact is terrible. This is not the area to put something like that. It's completely out of character. The second picture is that same balloon test from the park. The park is immediately north of my house. So you can see the tree line, you can see where the balloon is. Whether it's a tower or a tree, kind of looks ridiculous to me, in all honesty. I just, I can't see it. So the tower obviously is inconsistent with the zoning. it. So the tower obviously is inconsistent with the zoning in this district. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here. And so they're asking for a special use. And it's important to note that the zoning defines the intended character of this community. 30, 35-foot low-rise buildings, commercial buildings, two and a half times that at the 100-foot tower, more than two times the height with this tower. It's completely out of character. That's why they're going for a special use. It impacts the area. Now, I, there's some comment in the staff analysis about it being not a service or maybe more akin to utility. If it's a utility, it's an optional utility at best. There are other options that residents would have. They don't need Verizon. They could have other options. So section seven of the comprehensive plan addresses the Randall Road corridor and provides design objectives that serve as the basis for the design concept development in the corridor, obviously. And specifically, it goes beyond the traffic priorities that include the quality of life issues important to the community. And again, I want to reference the petition that over 200 residents signed, that this is out of character. I'm going to point to the fourth bullet points in the comprehensive plan, which states that the design objectives must complement the views on, and I'm going to emphasize here, off the corridor by creating and preserving sightlines to important elements. Look at the picture again. The important element that I'm going to reference is, if I looked out my door, I don't see a tower, I don't see a tree. I see a lowline level of trees and nice blue sky in the day. And yes, at night, you can't see the tower, but I'm sleeping at night. I don't care about that. A 100-foot tower is not a desirable view in this low-rise commercial and residential area. If you look at the pictures, well, we've already gone through that, the discrepancy in the tower height versus the current tree line. And some of those pictures look to be deceptive because it makes it look like the tower is not that much taller than the tree lines. That's why I printed these in color for you to see a very different perspective. Okay? So in some cases, it looks like the tower would be approximate height of the trees, or maybe a third over. This one's going to be twice that. I'm also going to sit my, submit my written comments at the end of this. So I'd like you to imagine something. You're driving south, from the south on Randall Road, and you're approximately at Menards, and you're on the hill. Narrow vision, you're driving down the road. What's the first thing that's going to come into your view? A tower or a pine tree. Now imagine you're driving south on Randall Road over the railroad tracks. What do you see? Exact same thing. It's the defining structure and character of that area, and I don't think that's what Geneva wants. I'm going to switch to standard number five. And that tower does adversely affect the character of the area. On page five of the Cityscape report, it states that the applicant has not addressed the visual impact of a 100-foot tower, call it 85-foot if you'd like, immediately west of the tree line along Bent Tree in Crystal Court, Tree Court. That's the true intersection of this tower. I know Mr. Dolan referenced before, they picked an intersection at Glen Eagle and Randall. It's pretty far away. Could have picked something closer. Could have picked Christina and Randall. You could have picked Christina and Bent Tree. Pretty much picked the furthest intersection that you could possibly imagine to depict the tower. That's what I wanted to represent in the pictures as well. I'm also going to refer to the third permit consideration, recommending that the pole be finished with color that more or less blends in. I'm going to say, kind of off-script here, the tree is worse than that. One, there's no color that could possibly match every particular view that I'm going to have depending on the time of day. A tree there, completely out of character. Doesn't make any sense. I want to take one more comment. This one's off-script. And when we talk about additional lease space that's already been provided, and maybe up to three additional antenna on that tower, well, that's today's condition. There are three competitors. I've heard comment before in the other proposal, and tonight I'm going to say, what limits it to four? What happens if there are additional competitors two, three years from now? How many more towers will go up that continue to impact this area? Just want to throw that out there for consideration. So in conclusion, I also believe that there are other options as we've discussed, and it was commented, which Cityscape report addresses, starting at the bottom of page three. And I respectfully ask the PZ, the zoning commission here, to not recommend the proposal to the city council for those reasons above. And we'll leave you with this final thought. Verizon has other options. They could build a tower somewhere else. They could use small sites, small cells, whatever it might be. My fellow residents and neighbors, we can't move our houses. It's impossible. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Sir, did you want to submit your written comments? You mentioned you did want to do that. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, next person on the list is Dale Rathundee, I believe is. Sorry, I probably didn't pronounce the last name correct.
Let me try to turn this on. Helps a little bit. Yeah, I'm Dale Rathundee. My wife Karen and I live on Crystal Tree Court, and we've been a resident here for 25 years. We moved in when there was a berm on the north and the south.
Sir, could you speak up a little bit?
Oh, sure.
Possibly raise your mic.
Do I get spelling to put these people on?
Yes.
Last name spelling?
We'll make sure you get spelling.
Thank you.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, did you ask for spelling?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead.
My last name?
Yeah.
Okay. It's Rathundee. R-A-T-H-U-N-D-E. It's pronounced Rathundee. I have several comments related to the Verizon submission. They're not the same as the detailed comments that we turned in via email, but because of some of the discussion that we just had, when I'm done with these comments, I have a couple that I'll clarify about E11 and future growth and things like that. I'm assuming that the commission read the public comments before this meeting? Is that the standard practice?
It's standard practice. Planners do post it to us to make sure that we have a link to it. So I think we got it at noon. We got the link where all the comments were.
Because I certainly don't...
And then we got a late update for like last-minute comments. So yes, we do definitely read them.
I certainly don't want to repeat, repeat the ones that came in via email if you've already gone through those.
Yes, we, yeah, there's quite a few comments that were put in.
So my first comment is regarding the neighborhood response to the Verizon cell tower petition. I'm just going to break it down a little bit because it's not as obvious if you just see a bunch of signatures on a page. The petition primarily focused on the 136 homes in the immediate, what we call the impacted area, where the tower site is proposed. It's on the southwest side of Eagle Brook subdivision, where all the streets are connected to Bent Tree, so that corner of Eagle Brook. The results of the petition show 100% of the homes on or adjacent to Bent Tree along the whole street are opposed to the cell tower. And 100% of the homes on Crystal Tree Court are opposed. And 100% of the homes on El Dorado Drive that are directly behind the homes on Crystal Tree Court are all opposed. This would likely cover all the homes in the notice that the city sent out for homes within 500 feet. We don't have your list of addresses, but we're just estimating the 500 feet. Pretty much all those homes signed the petition. Let's see. In total, 92% of all the homes on the Eagle Brook Park side of El Dorado Drive are all opposed to the cell site tower. One home that did answer the door had a conflict of interest due to work, which I understand, they could not put their signature on the petition. Overall, 85% of the homes on the southwest side have signed the petition, an overall total of 224 Geneva residents from the area. And now that's including many Verizon customers on every street of this what's supposed to be an insufficient coverage area. If you assume Verizon's market share between T-Mobile and AT&amp;T and Verizon, which I think is about 30, 31%, somewhere about that, you're probably talking 70 to 80 residents who have Verizon in this area that signed the petition. Let's see. The, the number of people, this was a pretty significant number because we had to do this during COVID. If it wasn't for COVID, you know, they prevented many residents from even answering the door, and we have some doors that have no soliciting signs on them. So 85% of all the homes is a pretty significant number. So this should help clarify that the vast majority of Eagle Brook residents closest to the proposed site consider this a major visual impact, and they're opposed to the tower for all the five reasons that are stated in the petition that you already have. Now, because of the previous discussion about the visual impact, let me go off and just add a side comment to that, because it's really subjective, isn't it, on how bad of an impact, a visual impact it might be? And I think in the staff analysis, it might have been called a minor visual impact. So here's some minor visual impacts, like the dead trees that are not replaced along Bent Tree, along the tree berm, both by Wild Dune Street and the Bent Tree Street. You know, grass not being maintained and cut behind Ashley Furniture Store, garbage on Bent Tree, garbage along the berm that's periodically picked up by neighbors. I don't know if the city knows that, but they do. Stacking mulch bags that are stored in the Home Depot parking lot across from the homes. The cities received complaints on all these items I just mentioned. But these visual impacts are fixable. I think the city's been getting letters for five years about the deteriorating berm. I think I heard there's a plan in the next two years from one of the aldermen to do some work to improve the berm. So these types of things can be fixed. The 100-foot tower, the visual impact of that is not in the same league as these type of visual impacts that homeowners are already complaining about. And the tower visual impact can't be fixed, which is why it's a major visual impact to the neighborhood. So it's really relative. If you're calling it minor or major, what are you comparing it to? What I listed are what homeowners already consider visual impacts, but those can be fixed. My second comment is regarding health risks and the public perception that can diminish nearby property values, which is part of special use number two. And we heard the opening comment that, and we know the FCC, and you can't use RF exposure as a reason, you know, to decline an applicant for putting up a tower. That's pretty well understood. So to respect the committee's time, we're not going to repeat the detailed studies that were documented in the signed petition, which was listed under reason one. Those are all the health studies.
Just for, again, the health studies are not relevant, sorry. Health studies are not relevant, and again, I want to remind the group that we are not going to consider the health studies, that they're not to consider the health studies because it's been preempted by the Telecommunications Act of 1996.
Right. But promoting community health, safety, and welfare while minimizing the impacts of wireless facilities...
Again, I'm going to remind you that we're not going to consider the health impacts.
That's right. But it's part of the zoning ordinance section 11312A. Okay? So we've seen the coverage map, which is basically signal propagation. So just so people understand how the signal propagation works, the fact is, the signal propagation is RF waves. Those decrease as the distance from the tower antenna increases, the farther you get away.
Sir, are you, are you going to talk about whether or not this has an adverse health impact on humanity?
I'm going to say there's a customer perception of a health risk which impacts property value.
I'm not going to, I'm going to, I'm going to advise the chairman...
Are you denying that?
That you cannot consider that. It's out of order.
Cannot, cannot consider that under current federal law, sir.
No, no. You can't deny an applicant on the basis of RF exposure or the health impacts of RF exposure. You can deny based on impact of property value and...
Not according to the Seventh Circuit. And we're in the Seventh Circuit. So my recommendation to the chair is that this is out of order.
It's out of order, sir. You have to, please extend the germane comments that are sitting on these placards in front of you. Otherwise, I can't allow you to speak on this matter.
So the city, so what you're saying is you don't recognize the public perception of something that may be unhealthy?
The perception is not, in this case, we cannot go there because the federal government does not allow us to go there.
Yeah, I understand what they can't allow you to do. It doesn't cover public perception.
So if you're not willing to follow those guidelines, then you can't speak.
Okay.
On that, on that issue.
On that issue. You could speak on other, many other items that are...
I will, I will talk on other items. I'm just very surprised that public perception of something like, it doesn't look nice, that's aesthetically, if it's a major visual impact, that's a public perception, and it decreases property value. If people feel they'll be near something that can cause illness, that's a public perception that could bring down property value.
And the federal government has said you can, we can, we cannot consider the second one.
Okay. All right. So I'll go on to my third comment, which is regarding the justification letter responses. The Geneva zoning code section 11312J2 requires, and I'll quote, "proof that the proposed site is essential to meet the service demands of the geographic area." That is, the site versus other options, many other options that exist, is absolutely necessary. It's vital that it's this site. Okay? So basically, the definition of what essential means. The justification is based solely on the coverage and propagation map, which is a model. It's a simulation. And let me just stop here and ask Mr. Dolan one question. Were there any measurements taken in any of the homes as input to create this coverage map, this signal propagation map, to indicate that you have unreliable in-home service? You know, go in with an EMF meter into homes, buildings, and verify the signal strength and conclude it's...
Yeah, the, the network engineers at Verizon have a very sophisticated network deployment tool that they use, which doesn't include walking into some personal residences. But it does include a sophisticated tool which allows them to see what the coverage and maps are for existing sites, and then it does project what the capacity and coverage will be for future sites. And it also projects the need for the site, and it also mentions without this site, you're going to experience capacity gaps in other areas of Geneva.
All right. So the capacity map is basically signal propagation, right? Signal strength, signal propagation. When it gets too weak, you think it becomes unreliable. So I think what we heard is it's based on a model, no in-home measurements, like a weather model. Sometimes it's right, sometimes it's wrong. It's basically a computer model. I think two of those coverage maps were on the city website, submitted at different times. You notice the coverage shown in there with what's colored purple for the high energy and the blue, the lower energy, because the farther away you are, the weaker the signal. They submitted two different coverage maps. You run the model, the model different times, you get different results. If you don't actually go into residences and buildings and measure the signal strength, because it weakens as you go through concrete walls and things like that, you don't know. It's just a model. Okay, so since signals travel for many miles, and from these tower, towers, they travel like 10 miles easily in a urban area, 20 miles in a... like ten miles easily in a urban area, twenty miles in a rural area. These towers are, what, two miles apart from each other. One of these towers could cover when the other tower goes down for maintenance. That's how far the signals travel. Uh, what these coverage maps are showing in the light blue is just lower wave energy, not as strong as in the first five hundred feet. Now, this signal coverage would have been the same or very similar for many years as the distance between these towers and the major buildings on Randall Road have all existed. They have not changed. The Eagle Brook and Randall Square subdivisions, the retail stores along Randall Road, smartphones, the Verizon 4G LTE service have all been in this area and existed for over eight years. 4G LTE was in the major markets ten years ago, but I think in Geneva, it's been about eight years, without the need for this cell tower. It's my understanding that no proposal, or that the proposal is not due to any known complaints from residents, uh, as mentioned in petition item, uh, reason number three, or public comments. Now, if you look at some of the public comments that were turned in at the far end of King's Court or on the other side of Fairway Circle, people work from home in their basement, have had it for years, they, they've told you through public comment, they don't have any problems with the Verizon, Verizon service. So that's data coming from the residents. It's not a model. Uh, but also, there was a question about city and police. They're not petitioning for this. Um, I asked an alderman, and when asked, I'll quote, he said, "The city is not asking for more reliable service. Verizon approached the city requesting this tower." That was a quote from one of our second ward aldermen. "Verizon is making an argument that they need to improve their network for reliable coverage for E-911 calls. From talking to residents in the impacted area who said they have Verizon wireless service," and that's a large number of them, "none indicated an issue or concern with their Verizon mobile phone service, and they know of no known dead spots in the area. That's where you can't, like, originate a call. Um, drive under a bridge and your call gets dropped. That would be considered a dead spot. Those are usually fixed with, like, some small cells or something that would just cover those, those dead spot areas, but nobody knows of any of those." Now, the fact is, any calls can be dropped due to many reasons, such as, because remember, these are computer systems and these base stations that run the cell sites. They can fail for software bugs, hardware failures, the weather's one of the main ones, because this is wireless, and any other signal interference or other failures like power. All will still exist regardless of this added tower and still impact E-911 calls or any calls to be dropped. However, a good wireless system reaching an overload condition, like high traffic periods during a busy hour in the morning or the afternoon, if it had to shed calls, it would not shed or drop E-911 calls that are in progress. So you could all rest. We don't have an E-911 emergency. Given no evidence was provided of an increase in capacity utilization, right, per Cityscape's review, that data is typically provided for an applicant wanting to add a whole new tower. There's a difference between capacity and, and coverage, if we need to get into that. But a capacity utilization graph, which it didn't seem Mr. Donnelly knew much about, is what tells you if the base stations are getting overloaded, right? If they can't handle all the connections being made by the N-unit, which is the, you know, the cellphones. So there's no proof of a capacity utilization graph, no proof of showing a drop call in, increase, drop calls during the busy hour, uh, any service outages, or any proof of complaints coming in from Verizon customers in the area. None of that was submitted as proof. And let me just add here from one of the comments that I turned in via email. If you had insufficient coverage, people would have to make their phone calls outside or put in a Verizon in-home signal booster. You can buy them on Amazon if you need one, if your signal's not strong enough in the area. Well, I went over to the Verizon store in Batavia, and I asked. They don't sell them. They say nobody asks for them, and they don't need them in the area because they have such good coverage. The towers are not that far apart from each other. But yet, we keep hearing we got this insufficient coverage in the area. So we asked the Planning and Zoning Commission to clearly indicate to the city council that Verizon did not demonstrate compliance with the actual requirement that the site is essential. You know, if you build homes and you only have one landline go into the home, I'd probably say that's essential. We have three or four wireless carriers that people can choose from in the area. Pick whichever one they want to use, that doesn't make them essential, because we have options. And that was stated in the petition as well. There's many data service options in the area for the residents. Um, so I'll go on to my fourth comment, my last comment. Is there any questions so far on, on any of those? I don't want to rush through it if you're thinking about.
We're usually not bashful in that regard. If we have a follow-on question, we usually break in.
Great, great, great. My fourth comment's regarding the response to the sworn statement of compliance letter, which indicates good faith efforts were made to locate the facility and no existing structures of any kind currently exist which could be utilized within the half-mile search ring. This does not appear to be an extensive effort if all the structures and options were not fully considered and documented, per section eleven-three-twelve-J-one. Looking at the search ring, it's clear there are a number of buildings and rooftops along both sides of Randall Road with more distance from any existing resident homes. Now, tower number four that was put on that map may be an example of a competitor's rooftop in the same target area. They all have the same problem. I went and looked. I couldn't find this rooftop cell site. It's supposed to be on the old KFC building. It was evaluated by Verizon and their neighboring structure table. It was evaluated by Cityscape. I don't even see it. I don't know how they do an evaluation of something that isn't there anymore. I find that kind of puzzling. But such structures support rooftop cell sites and small, lower-energy cells, which are now being widely deployed by service providers and designed to work with existing towers and infrastructure to be more appropriate for such established neighborhoods. It's my understanding that Geneva has already installed two or three of these small cells along State Street or near downtown. I didn't go seek them out, but I think David mentioned that to me. Uh, I'm sure if you're going to put some more antennas downtown, you'd probably want to have a small, more inconspicuous, you know, small cell in the area. Um, there's now a new rooftop cell site near the Arcata Theater in downtown St. Charles. I think it's the sixth sector cell site, so it's actually medium-sized, pretty good-sized cell site. I think it's on top of the Berry Barbershop Building. That's just a couple buildings over from the Arcata Theater. And that's an example of using another approach to a target busy street area with a lot of residential stores to offload towers, neighboring towers. Um, so I checked the Verizon.com website, and sure enough, they have a program for leasing rooftop sites. That's part of their business, because they know they can't always put in a new tower. Um, and I also looked at Verizon's News Center, where they have articles posted of what's going on with the company. And they indicate Verizon has been investing heavily in small cells over the last several years to stay ahead of the growing demand on our 4G LTE network. And they make them for 5G too. They just started with 4G. What they call Verizon nationwide, it's actually, um, they call it 5G nationwide. It actually includes the current 4G LTE service. It does both. It's a marketing thing. Um, they also go on to say they've installed, oh, they claim they have installed more sort small cells than anyone else in the United States. And they state it's already up and running in many communities, blending with the environment, and helping deliver robust 4G LTE connectivity. Makes things more, you know, more reliable. Now, let me just mention one that, and I'll give you a copy of these, so, um, these comments, so Chayton can, you know, scan them in, just make them part of the public comments. Um, but if you go on there, you can even see statements from, Nikki Palmer was the head chief network officer. I think she's now the head of development in wireless, but it, this was a year and a half ago. She was the lead engineering officer. And she makes statements, if you really want to meet the customer demand, it's not to build these large macro cell towers, it's to go low and tight. It's in a small cell article. That's the best way to do it. So this is where Verizon is going. "The use of small cells can offload towers and can eliminate the need for larger cell towers," as stated by their chief network officer. "Can be installed on existing buildings or poles. They're lower to the ground. They take up less power, and they have lower RF energy and are more environmentally friendly." As far as reliability goes, the more of these smaller cells you have installed around in the area, the smaller the drop call impact when one of them go down. Basically, you look at a big tower, it's a big fault group, big base station, rooftops, small cells, smaller base stations, less antennas, if they go down, less impact to the overall calls going on in the town. So populating more of the smaller sites is definitely more reliable than having dedication or dependence on one large tower. It's my understanding the city has not received any information from Verizon on evaluating the higher-ranked options as required in section eleven-three-twelve-J-one. There are more preferred solutions to the city, and they have an easier process, including no special use and no public hearing. So we ask that Verizon must respond in requiring, in, in writing, as required, right, per section eleven-three-twelve-E-one, on why higher-ranked options better designed for these circumstances and a key part of Verizon's network strategy, right, that I just went over, that they advertise on their Verizon.com, why these other approaches are not feasible in this area, because there's been, there's been no evidence presented why they're not, that information is missing. Finally, we ask the Planning and Zoning Commission to enforce the preferred alternatives and not make any exceptions to the requirements or regulations in the comprehensive plan. If it is determined a tower is needed, obviously, it's the lowest-cost approach for Verizon or any wireless carrier, because the more sites you have to equip and install, it costs the company more money. So they go after the one that's the biggest bang for the buck, costs them the least amount of money. So if it's determined a tower is needed, for example, due to the population growth in Batavia over the last few years, and you can see this, if you look it up right on the web, like I looked it up on worldpopulationreview.com, um, or if it's due to the expansions near the south Verizon, Verizon Tower, you know, that's where new subdivisions have been built, the new apartment buildings are going in, so you probably expect a little more business, more traffic in that area in the future. There are other parking lots in the search ring, such as Walmart, like maybe the front parking lot of Walmart, that are farther off Randall Road and farther from all existing homes, whether it's Geneva or Batavia. So there are definitely other locations if you had to put a tower as opposed to using some of the rooftop approaches. "Like downtown Geneva, we want to keep our neighborhood safe and beautiful. Many of us are investing in our homes, plan to stay here if we can, but the area would not be as safe and attractive to homeowners and future home buyers due to the location of this, you know, this added tower." Now, I did probably have a follow-up here. Let me give a copy of this while I remember the-
One comment does have some of the RF exposure health stuff that I didn't read to, but it isn't now. So again, just so everybody's on the same page, my recommendation is that we will not consider any of the things related to health.
Yeah, there's, I, I skipped parts of that.
No, 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 I know you did. I'm just saying in the material, in the, in the materials that that one, that's the recommendation to the, to the body.
So a, a question for Mr. Donnelly on the, um, the coverage, signal propagation map. Are these, is this map for the 4G LTE signals?
Correct.
They are?
Correct, yes.
Do you have a map for your 5G signals?
The 5G map's still being overlaid, and, no, we, we don't have a map of the 5G overlay.
So what I understand is, um, on one of the comments that I turned in an email, verified, because I don't have, I have an AT&amp;T phone, I had to go to the Batavia Verizon store to ask them questions. Um, yeah, so 5G is already available in Batavia, in the tri-city area, Batavia, St. Charles, Geneva. It's already installed on the towers. That's a completely different, uh, frequencies for the signals. And signal propagation maps depend on the signal, right? Lower signals pass through concrete walls easier, through retail stores. Higher frequency signals in that spectrum, like used in 5G, don't travel as far, might not pass through things as easy. Um, there would be a coverage map for 5G and a coverage map for 4G LTE. They're different frequencies. So if you're doing a model, you really want to model both. If a customer has a 5G phone, it's going to pick up either a 4G LTE signal or a 5G signal. The phone's going to pick up the strongest signal, right? And as people migrate to 5G, it offloads the 4G LTE network, because now they're switching over to 5G. So why would you be beefing up a 4G LTE network? We went from 2G to 3G, 3G to 4G, now we're going from 4G to 5G. We did all those other transitions with the towers that we have. We didn't need another tower. They're going to do the same thing. You start to depopulate antennas, which are the sectors on the cell towers, from the 4G signal, and you start putting up more antennas for 5G as customers start to migrate over. Uh, the last thing I added comment, and I'm sorry if I'm taking, I'm taking up more time than I had planned, but because of the discussion earlier, I just want to point some of these things out. Uh, there was discussion about this is the future, this is growth about to happen. Uh, even Cityscape Review indicated you'd have to have a steep rate increase in populat, population density and smartphone usage. It would have to rise a steep rate, and in which case, they say, "The carriers on these towers may exceed the capacity." So, you know, I wonder, are we going to all of a sudden have this big growth? Uh, so I looked at the data. Uh, Geneva population has been steadily declining since it peaked in twenty-seventeen, so it's not like Geneva population is, is skyrocketing. Um, if you look at pewresearch.org, which has been tracking this since two thousand and two, ninety-seven percent of Americans now own cellphones of some type as of February twenty-twenty-one. So there's not much growth left, uh, in any, you know, what, probably the people that don't want cellphones probably don't plan to get one by now. But if there was any growth left, it'd be split between three wireless providers, because it isn't like Verizon's the only service provider, right? There's AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and others. So any future growth of more cellphones in the area is really going to be split between all these towers that exist around here. Um, so there's not significant growth for, or a steep rate coming, you know, for Verizon. And one other thing that, related to that, I just want to see if I could find it. Excuse me, it'll take a second here. Um, there's also been a steady decline of those who use smartphones as their primary means of- of online internet access, at the home, in recent years. That's because the vast majority of Geneva residents have broadband service in their house. They have AT&amp;T, Comcast, MetroNet, they use Wi-Fi for their smartphone data applications, you know, Facebook, downloading music, social media, all that, as well as their laptops and their tablets. That offloads the cell sites soon as they go in their house, because they're connecting to Wi-Fi, they're not even using the cell sites for all the data transferring. So that offloads cell sites of the internet traffic. So you can see, um, there isn't anything indicating a big significant growth in the area. The only thing going on right now is people are migrating from 4G to 5G, which in the past, like I said, we went from 2G to 3G, 4G to, 3G to 4G, and new towers were not needed to do that. So I think that's the end of my side comments. Oh, I could think of one more while I'm up here. So you've seen the, uh, the coverage map, the before and after, this is the after. What you notice in the, um, in both the before and the after is most of Randall Square is still in the light blue area, right, which is farther away from the cell sites, even if you put the new tower in. I don't know what the solution for that is, if they got insufficient residence coverage. Is there a proposal from Verizon to put another tower in yet to better serve, you know, that part of Randall Square? Because it's in the same light blue area as our southwest side of Eagle Brook subdivision. So if it's, if it's unreliable, there must be a plan. Now, I think one of the required documents Verizon is supposed to turn in, or the applicant, is their plans for the next five years. So I think the residents would like to know, is there a plan for another cell tower to be put on that side of, in Geneva? Because certainly putting one here isn't necessarily going to cover it. Now, what's interesting is their tower structure neighboring map gave you reasons of why they couldn't consider different towers. Like Tower 2 and 3 over on, where in the Randall Square side, are in the coverage area of the Verizon Tower 1. Now, if you look at the radius from there, you basically see that would cover all of the Eagle Brook subdivision, if it's in the coverage area over by Tower 1 and 2. And they're saying they don't need to put anything on that tower. But here's the thing, and you know where I'm, I'm referring to, Tower 2 and 3, that by the railroad tracks, closer to, whoops, I'm sorry, closer to like the hospital side over there? If you were actually to put more sectors on those, that tower, you would be serving all of Randall Square, the other side, where the hospital is, and what's the other subdivision? Fisher Farms, yeah, you'd be serving all that. And you know what you'd be doing? Offloading Verizon Tower 1. Now, Tower 5, which is a little closer to Fabian, um, you could put more, a base station, more sectors on that, co-located on that tower, and you would be offloading that area from the south Verizon Tower. So besides being able to put rooftop cell sites on many buildings, like the Ross store, you know, on Randall Road, or using these other towers, there's many other locations that could be considered if you want to offload the capacity from the two existing Verizon Towers. None of those have been submitted or considered, and I think that was required for them to do that. So I'd like to thank you for giving me the time, and I took a little extra time more than I thought because of some of the earlier discussion, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Speaker, may I have an opportunity to respond to some of the assertions?
Certainly.
Uh, the, the speaker had mentioned that, that he's, he's determined that Verizon does not need a cell site in the area, or doesn't have evidence of a cell site in the area. And I'd like to point attention to the notarized affidavit from the chief engineer of Verizon Wireless Network Engineering, that, that explains why a cell site is needed here, and why service will degrade in future in Geneva without this cell site. It's a notarized affidavit testimony from him why this site is needed. It is the best option, it's the design engineers decided this is the best option for this area to provide coverage and capacity. And I want to emphasize capacity. Capacity, so coverage means you can have weaker coverage in an area and still connect your calls. But as the, as the network grows, and it will grow, wireless will grow in, in the future, there'll be more and more data user in the network in the future. It's exponential, it's going up like this. There will be coverage in gaps in the city of Geneva. We've demonstrated, worked closely with city staff and the third-party consultants, Cityscape consultants hired by the city, to create our application to fit into the existing ordinance by the city of Geneva. We, maybe it's best way to say it like this, there's lots of dead spots. And I'll say every carrier has their dead spots. They can't, no one has enough budget to fill all their dead spots. They don't build sites where they don't need them. It doesn't make sense, it doesn't make any business sense or financial sense, customer sense. There are more dead spots than they have budget to fill. This is a site, they've handpicked as a high priority site, and need a site. So I just refer back to the notarized affidavit from the chief network engineer. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next one, I believe it's Karen is your wife, do you wish to speak?
Nope, you didn't, no, for me, so.
Okay, all right, just checking, you're on the list, so I'm, I'm not going to ignore you, there's like, that's fine. Bill Bush, are you actually wanting?
For item.
Okay, I want to make sure that you're not here to speak, because you are waiting, so I'm just wondering if you wanted to speak.
Geneva landowner now, so.
Okay, well, okay, if you don't want to speak on this matter, that's fine. Bruce Ariello, I believe is his last name, Bruce.
I have been covered, I'll set free hash it.
You don't wish to speak on the matter, okay? I believe it's Jim Wilber? Jim?
I won't have as much. And I've scratched some based on what was said earlier in regard to the health issues, so.
Sir, if you just teach your name and address.
Yep, absolutely. I'm going to put my glasses on. Middle age, it's hard to read. Okay, my name is Jim Wilber. My wife Helen and I have lived in, at 1916 Crystal Tree Court for over 20 years. In the last year, we've invested over $125,000 in improving and updating our home, and I would like to address item 2 from the special use request document. The statement on item 2 is the proposed building or use will not diminish the value of adjacent nearby properties. I think we can all agree that a cellphone tower is not a desirable view. You, you wouldn't go out and build a nice home looking at it. The petitioner's position states broadly speaking, the proposed tower could generate a minor visual disruption impacting the overall intent to maintain pleasant landscape along the corridor and screen undesirable views. It may not generate much of a disruption as visible from Randall Road, but given that the tower will be more than three times taller than the berm along Bent Tree Drive separating the commercial property from the residential property, it will not be a minor visual disruption to those on the other side of the berm. A structure so much taller than any of the other buildings allowed in this area will alter the character, which will in turn have a negative impact on real estate values. Nobody can dispute that the view you have from a house will influence how desirable a piece of property is. Any property with a lake view, river view, or golf course view will be more desirable. Adversely, a view of something less aesthetically pleasing will be less desirable. You would not want to look at a waste transfer station, power transmission lines, or I believe a cell tower. As indicated in the petition that was given to the city, there was a study conducted by the National Institute for Science, Law, and Public Policy in June of 2014. It's located in Washington DC, and it's in regards, they did some polling in regard to neighborhood cell towers and antennas. Do they impact a property's desirability? It shows that home buyers and renters are less interested in properties located near cell towers and antennas. And of the thousand survey respondents, 94% said a nearby cell tower or group of antennas would negatively impact interest in a property or the price they would be willing to pay for it. 79% said under no circumstances would they ever purchase or rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower. 89%, they were generally concerned about the increasing number of cell towers and antennas in their residential neighborhood. And there's a document put out for appraisers, it's the HUD HOC Reference Guide for Appraisers, and there are instructions in there as to what needs to be noted on the appraisal. And this is taken directly from this document. It's regarding hazards and nuisances. Overhead high voltage transmission towers and lines. Chapter 1, appraisal and property requirements. And I'm not going to read all of it, but it, what it states is, the appraiser must indicate whether the dwelling or related property improvement is located within the easement serving a high voltage transmission line, radio, TV transmission tower, cellphone tower, and other items. It says if the dwelling or related property improvement is located within such an easement, the underwriter must obtain a letter from the owner or operator of the tower indicating that the dwelling and its related property improvements are not located within the tower's engineered fall distance in order to waive this requirement. But that, that's not an issue, that, that's taken care of. But if the dwelling and related property improvements are located outside the easement property, it's considered eligible and no action is necessary. However, they are instructed to note and comment on the effect of marketability resulting from proximity to such sites and nuisance, or hazards and nuisances. And I confirm this with the local real estate appraiser, that this, this is still required when doing appraisals like that. Okay, talking, talking about the study, it says that, the, yeah, perception that they do not want to live near such a structure, it'll reduce numbers of family, number of families willing to consider purchasing in the area. If there are fewer people willing to consider such a property, economics dictates the value will be lower. This perception devalues our homes for which existing homeowners in Geneva will lose money out of their pocket while a wireless service provider increases their profits. And there's a little known fact is that, yeah, most people aren't aware, once a tower is built, it can go up to 20 feet higher with no politic, public act process due. And this is due to the passing of section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012. In other words, and I, I know we started out today thinking it was a 100-foot tower, and we see that now it's down to 85. A 100-foot tower can be increased to 120 feet, or an 85-foot could go to 105, what did, what did we say, 85 feet was it?
We'll, we'll check into that.
Yeah, okay, but, yeah, it, it can, it can go with.
Staff will.
Okay, but it can go up another 20 feet without, without any, any input from the city, so, and, yeah, a lot of people aren't aware of this.
We'll get an answer to that.
Okay, and if you Google the 6409A, you'll, you'll find it. If approved and built, the tower will both adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood as well as state, as well as real estate values in close proximity to it. And in closing, I thank you for the time, and I request that you, that the planning and zoning commission recommend that the city council decline the petitioner's request for a variance that would allow this tower to be built. And I, would, would any of you want to live 220 feet from, from this tower? So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, a quick comment?
Yes.
You want to hand me the first, you want to hand me this? Okay, that's fine, we'll take it. That's fine, he has it now, it's. Mr. Dolan, you wish to respond?
Thank you, um, yes, I do agree with the planning staff comment in their report that, that this will have a minor visual impact. In fact, in two neighboring, two neighboring neighborhoods, Eldorado Court, it's considered not visible from Eldorado Court, and from Fox Fire Court, it's considered not visible from Fox Fire Court. Now, Crystal Tree Court, which I believe most of the speakers have been from, it is the closest to the tower. And really, we build it away from all residents at all, no one can see, see the tower. It's just not practical. This is the best site in the area, we worked for many months to be in compliance with the city of Geneva, and, and, but, in listening, in reading all 47-plus comments, perhaps over 50 comments, the strongest word from, from, from Crystal Tree Court, that we did agree to amend our application to reduce it by 15 feet and to convert from a stealth pole to a monopane. So that's specifically to address the concerns of the appearance of, of the tower. We do feel our submission, our application meets the ordinance without due to insubtle, we did feel this was a concession that, that made sense in this case.
All right, thank you. I believe we've got the same situation here as Helen Wilber. Do you wish to speak?
Just a couple of short things.
Certainly, please come forward.
I wish I didn't have. Helen Wilber, Crystal Tree Court. I just, most of my things are just things that are in addition to things that have already been brought up. The first is the balloon test. So the first one was canceled, the second one wasn't perfect, but it was somewhat successful, somewhat not. I don't know if you, all of you are aware, but where they launched the actual balloon from was not the actual place that the tower would be. And we've got documentation that can show you right here, this truck here is right by this curb, and that is not where the tower is going to go up. So that is going to have a, a difference of perception when you're looking at the balloon up in the air. Now, Mr. Dolan, he had a nice picture of his balloon, but I'd like to submit the picture of my balloon, because it's a lot taller. The second one is that we can all look forward to, um, Mr. Dolan's company working with Verizon to improve our berm. Well, I don't know, maybe you haven't talked to the owner of that property, because I know myself and probably everyone behind me has called the owner, and called Ashley, or, I'm sorry, I can't think of the, whoever. They do not take care of their property. And if you think that a berm is going to cover this big cement thing with a wall that you're putting up, it's, it's not, not in the condition it's at. There's trees that have been down for three years, they're still laying there. Here, these are from today, you can see right through the berm into the car. So if I can see a car in the parking lot, of course, I'm going to see this big ugly structure. That's my second thing. I'll give, I'll just bring these all up to the end. My third thing was, I'm not techni, technically, I'm, I'm technically challenged, let's put it like that. So reading through whatever information I could on the internet, all the zoning things, it was a little challenging, but I, it was very important to me, and I wanted to do it. And I came across, it was in the document section of the Geneva RLUS stuff, and it was with all the blueprints of what the tower would be and everything. And it says RF emissions report required, and then it says no. And that's a question I have, I don't understand that, does that mean it will never be required? Will we never know how many RF emissions are coming out of that? And who, I'm curious, like, who oversees that?
I am.
No, I'm not saying anything, but I'm just asking a question. No, I'm not saying anything, but I'm just asking a question. It says no. So, what does that mean?
It says no in what regard?
It says no. RF emissions report required, ever? It's on the, it's on your website.
Is it part of the zoning ordinance?
Yes, it's, I can, I can pick it up. I can show you better.
I'm not sure where you're, what part of the, of the website you're referring to, but that would be helpful.
Hold on one second, I'll get it for you. Sorry.
First, Mr. Dolan, just a question. He's, he's still on, I'm making sure the planners are keeping an eye on that. He does cop in and out on camera. I was concerned about that. But he is definitely still online, we would not continue without him here, so.
I don't know. That's the...
I'll give it to the planners. I'm only so much familiar.
Because I'm not technically, I'm technically challenged, so.
We just want to know where-
Yes.
So, that's part of the documents that they sent?
Oh, that the applicant sent, okay.
Okay, so this is from the applicant.
So, the applicant's saying it's not required.
Yes, and I'm just asking, is that normal? Like, who oversees that? You know, obviously, there's a range that is safe, which the government tells us what it is, but-
Ma'am, ma'am, again, we can't touch-
So, the federal government oversees it.
Right. The federal, okay.
That's the end of the discussion.
Okay, but it says-
It's, it's the end of the discussion. They submitted it, it's their paperwork.
Okay.
So, again, if you have any concerns about health issues, you need to-
I didn't bring up health issues.
You were bringing them up indirectly, type, take to the federal government. We're not going to talk about it here.
Okey-dokey. Um, oh, speaking of the health, and I appreciate you all explaining about the FCC 1996. And Mr. Dolan went on, and I was kind of surprised because he just said, "Well, we can't talk about it," and I appreciate you saying we can't talk about it, but then he suggested, you know, there's reputable websites we can go to and whatnot. And so, you got your 30 seconds, and I'm going to take mine.
Let me be clear. Let, no, no, let me be clear about this. The federal government has passed a law, it's the Telecommunications Act of 1996.
Right.
The Seventh Circuit, which is the federal court in which Geneva is located, has said that this body cannot consider whether or not it is safe. That's it.
I understand it.
There's nothing further to talk about.
Well, there is. But there is, because he brought it up.
It doesn't open the door, it can't be considered, it's not a waiver, we're not going to talk about it, okay? And that is my advice to the body, and that is the end of it. Okay? It doesn't, it doesn't, the fact that-
Okay, and I'm just going to talk to him, because you said, "Look up the American Cancer Society."
Ma'am, ma'am, you cannot bring this forth in the commission, it's not germane to the discussion.
Oh, he did.
The commission cannot consider this as part of the discussion.
Okay, then you wipe him off too. Because he said, "Look it up, see what the American Cancer Society said." So, I want his stricken too then, otherwise, I'm going to read what they said. It's only fair.
It's not fair, it's not relevant.
It is relevant.
It is not relevant.
In your opinion?
No, it's not relevant.
Okay, then he needs to strike his comment, you need to strike his comment about going on to reliable sources and reading about it.
His comment doesn't matter either. It doesn't matter, it's not something-
Okay, then strike it.
There's nothing to strike.
He said it.
The council, okay, I'm sorry. The body will not consider, the body will not consider his comment, nor will they consider anybody else's comment that has to do with health issues related to a cell tower, because it is not relevant to the deliberations of this body. So, I am advising the body that no one is to consider, on this body, in deciding this application is to consider anything that has to do with the health of RF or cell towers, period. That is not to be considered. So, if that's what you're looking for, that is the direction.
Do you have other, do you have other criteria that are right in front of you, that are other concerns that are-
I understand that, I just noticed that he, he mentioned it, and so maybe in his future presentations, he shouldn't, because it's not allowed. That's all I've got, thank you.
All right, thank you. We have, it's Pat Hewin?
I'm uncovered.
You've been, okay, I just want to make sure. Joellen O'Brien?
Also, same thing, uncovered.
Okay, you're not wishing to speak, okay? And I believe it's Joe O'Brien? Are you, you, you not wishing to speak on this matter? Julie Landrum?
I'm here as well, and my neighbors have done an awesome job of presenting all our concerns. We appreciate you taking all of that into consideration.
Okay, so you don't wish to speak further on the matter? Okay. All right, that's all I have on the list here for people who wish to speak, or is there anyone present who didn't sign the sheet when they came in that wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, now, you've already talked, I gotta, I've got to make sure we get other people, there, the hearing's still open, so. Are there anyone else in the audience here, present at City Hall, which to speak on this matter? Okay, so, given the hour, we're at 10 o'clock, per the bylaws of the Planning Commission, do we want to continue?
Is there anybody online?
That's what I'm going to ask, but, or basically-
We have a total of six attendees online right now, we have two with hands raised.
Okay, so-
I'm fine going.
Commission is okay with moving, continuing, move forward? Okay. Very good, so, we will now take virtual comments. So, again, the procedure is, if you wish to speak on this matter, please raise your hand on the application and you'll be recognized to speak. I believe we have one right now?
Yeah. Matt Zaxas, I see your hand is raised, so we will proceed to unmute you. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and then proceed with your testimony.
Thank you, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. So, I'm a resident who lives within direct visual distance of the proposed tower, and I'm a happy Verizon customer. In fact, I'm calling in on my Verizon cellphone right now. I'm against the tower. Doug, you don't work for Verizon. Did Verizon commission you to go fix this problem, or are you proactively trying to go build a tower?
No, this, this initiated, this whole, I'm not speaking right, this, this whole process was initiated by Verizon, by Verizon's Network Engineering Department, and they came to me to identify candidates in the search ring.
Okay, so, if, if another tower is used, and we talked about the search ring, but if another tower is used and they go put additional towers on some other structure, are you cut out of the deal?
I'm not, I'm not sure I'm, I'm following what the point is.
There were multiple sites that were called down in this, correct? And they were disqualified for, for one or another, correct?
Right, yeah, if, if your point is, if you, if we had co-located on an adjacent tower, an adjacent rooftop, would we not be compensated? We would be compensated either way. We are their, their real estate arm that's been contracted to solve the problem in Geneva. And so, if, in our first choice-
The other towers are competitors, is that not true?
No, okay, so, you may have missed my earlier testimony, where our first choice is to locate on adjacent towers. By far the easiest, by far the best, by far the quickest to market, is to locate our antennas in existing towers. Network engineers reviewed all existing co-locatable sites in the region, and there was none that work or were for Verizon.
Okay, understood, I, I understand your, your argument on that. So, so listen, with all due respect, Doug Dolan, right, we heard he lives in St. Louis, he's not a part of our community, he's Lincoln, I'll vote.
I worked in Chicago for 10 years, and, and I feel a part of the community, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan, you, you're a businessman, you're a pro, right? You've heard all these arguments before, you don't care about the visual appeal of our town, our values.
Sir, sir-
You're interested in fucking money.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but please, we, please come to substantive issues, not dealing with, with, you know, approaching him as a, you know, deal with, deal with the substance of the issues. Okay, what has to do with it in terms of land use?
Fair enough.
Things that are germane to the commission's decision.
I'll comment on Verizon. Verizon's a $128 billion company, last year, they had $18 billion in profit. Our city budget is $100 million. There are other alternative options for the cell tower, okay? The, the picture that was provided by Mr. Dolan of the 85-foot tree that was, that was claimed to be a picture of the site, I, I'm looking at my computer, it was a, it was a digital image of the site, it wasn't even a real site. So, we're, we're trusting his opinion, we're not, we're not, in my opinion, getting the truth, okay? So, again, getting back to-
That's not true, that's not true, it's not a digital image, it's an actual existing tree, it's been there for four years.
Okay, all right, so, so again, getting back to the search ring, which is the, the scientific fact that we're using for where this thing needs to be. If you look at the document that's been provided, there's one location within that search ring, which is, which was disqualified because it was only 20 feet high. It looks like it's somewhere around the Starbucks at Randall Road in, in Bentory, or, excuse me, in Fargo. Again, getting back to Verizon, being such a large, massive company, I'm, I'm not a scientist, but if we put a tower on that system, and we also put a tower off of the, or another unit off the tower that is located near the middle school, which is about 100 feet outside the search ring, that would cover the gap. As residents of Geneva and stewards of the city, I don't know why we're not pressing Verizon to find an alternative plan, but rather than building this i-store. The other thing that I learned after researching Verizon is that they are dead set on 5G ultraband, right? We've all heard it, we've all seen it, it's downtown Chicago, it's in the airports, everywhere else. That technology needs to have essentially smaller towers every 1,500 feet. This tower that is proposed is said to increase 4G speeds. So, if Verizon needs to roll out 5G, this tower is quickly going to be effectively unneeded as these other microcenters are being deployed. I would ask this team, this group, to take a hard, hard look at what's actually going on here. Are there alternatives? Can Verizon solve this another way? The answer is clearly yes. Do we need this tower, this i-store where it's being proposed? The answer is no, we absolutely do not need it. The maps that have been provided only show two towers. They show that if you're standing downtown Batavia, Verizon's cell system doesn't need to work. Now, I'm sure a lot of the people sitting at City Hall right now have Verizon. You know that you get signal downtown Batavia. We're not taking into consideration all the data. We're listening to Doug, who owns a company that's been commissioned by Verizon, to be the expert. He's not the expert, the engineers from Verizon are the experts. I would just ask that we take a step back, let's understand what the real problems are, look at all the ways to solve it before we go and build an i-store in my backyard. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments, sir.
Mr. Chair, just one quick comment, I, my, my testimony tonight is, this is the best, least intrusive site to solve the coming big problem in Geneva. And that includes the other people who want to design the, the network. We do have the chief engineer who's designed this site, we have a sworn, sworn affidavit.
Doug, you're going to have to restate that, our transcriber could not hear you.
Okay, I might get in a horse here, but yes, we have a, the testimony is, the best site, the most, and the least intrusive site to solve the capacity problem at Geneva. And that are, despite comments about other ways to engineer the network, we have sworn testimony from the chief engineer in this district stating the best way to solve the network gap coming.
All right, thank you.
Emily McCafferty, I see your hand is raised, we will proceed to unmute you. Go ahead and unmute yourself, and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, this is Kevin McCafferty, Emily's husband. We live at 2089 Eldorado, which is within 500 feet of the proposed tower. I wanted to address Mr. Donnelly's assertion that-
Sir, sir, could you state your name, please?
Kevin McCafferty.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I was going to ask if Mr. Donnelly would mind sharing the screen again and putting up the slide nine, which showed the, the balloon in, in contrast to the tree line.
Mr. Dolan, you still have your presentation available?
Unmute, yes, I do.
I believe he's looking for slide nine, from what I heard from, from him.
Certainly. Think I need presentation rights, and I'll go to slide nine.
Yep, we're working on that.
There we go. Slide nine. Must have been the balloon?
I think you said that was maybe, maybe 10 or 20 feet below the maximum 100-foot, right, due to the wind? But, you know, that, that tree line there, that tree line there is about 30 feet, which I think we all agreed to. I mean, that's, that balloon's got to be flying about 40 feet, 50 feet maybe. So, the Crystal Tree Court, I'm sorry, the Fox Fire and Eldorado Drive Court, I think, I think it shows that there's, um, not visible from there, but I mean, this could be why, it's only, it's only flying at maybe half, you know?
The, the site is set back, if you can hear me, the site is set back about 100 feet from this tree line that you see in, in front of you. There was a 100-foot balloon, but the wind did push it over some. What I was, I was referring to were shots taken by the planning staff from Eldorado Court and Fox Fire Court, and they were unable to see the balloon.
Right, because it's probably about 50 feet there.
The engineer that flew the, the balloon said it was anywhere from 100 feet to 80 feet. He, he thought the, the wind blew it over by 20 feet at the most.
Okay, I actually was out there too, the day that they were doing the, the balloon launch, and it was not an engineer, it was a contractor. I spoke with them directly, just as an employee, so, he knew that it was flying sideways, and he, he, he said that there's nothing that he could do about it, except for just try to do his best.
Yeah, we, we had two balloon launches, and, and he'd worked for an engineering firm contracted by Verizon Wireless, so, so that's that.
Do you have anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Okay, so, apparently, there's no one in the queue right now, so if you are listening virtually and you wish to speak on this matter, please use your raise hand feature so that you can be recognized and you can speak on this matter. Okay, we're going to apparently hear from the same person, go ahead. Yep.
Matt Zaxas, I'm about to unmute you, go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
I just want to follow up, I know that I spoke earlier, and Doug had a chance to say that this is the best place that Verizon has said to put a test. Just because it's the best place doesn't mean it's the only place, it doesn't mean it's the only place that we can, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to repeat again, so, anyone who's listening remotely, if they wish to speak on this matter, please use your raised hand function on the application and you will be recognized to speak.
I believe it was Kevin McCafferty, proceed to unmute you, go ahead and unmute yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, this is actually Emily McCafferty, this time Kevin's wife. I had a question for Mr. Donnelly about why the Walmart parking lot wouldn't be ideal for this, because, you know, just looking at that search ring, you know, I feel like that would be the ideal spot for, you know, a giant tree like this, or just a giant structure, just because there isn't a residential area around that. So, could you explain to us why that area would not- So could you explain to us why that area would not be ideal?
Yeah, the Verizon Network Engineer felt that this was the least intrusive site in the area. The viability of a Walmart site is unknown. And basically, we have a landlord, a willing landlord, inside the search area, in an area that we feel is least intrusive to the site. And that's why this is, we feel, is our best site for Verizon, and Verizon Chief Engineer agrees. That's the purpose why we are presenting this one site. I know there's areas to move, and we oftentimes hear, why don't you go across the street? Why don't you move down the road? And invariably, we come in contact with new people, and sometimes more residents who might object to the tower. But this has the least impact, and I know the residents, especially along, the ones who have, that have heard from the most and have the most comments, live on Crystal Tree Court. And that's the purpose why we lowered our tower from 100 feet to 80 feet and changed it from a stealth pole to a monopole. We do feel that our original application complies with the ordinance. We've worked closely with the city staff to get this site approved, and we do feel it complies with the ordinance. And so that is why, but we did feel, we did read the comments, and we did amend our, are willing to amend our application to reduce the height and make it a tree. And that's why we think it's the best site.
Right. I just think that, you know, that Walmart parking lot, there aren't any residents that it would impact, besides, you know, the commercial buildings, besides Walmart and the commercial buildings. So I think that that definitely needs to be explored more before, you know, we go forward with anything like this. And that's all.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay, again, for folks that are virtual for this meeting, if you wish to speak, please use your raise hand function on your application so you can be recognized to speak on this matter. Okay? We're not seeing anyone in the queue, so I'll repeat one more time for the virtual folks. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please use your raised hand function on the application so you can be recognized to speak on this matter. We've already heard from that one, so no, not at this time. So, um... Yes, John?
I think that Mr. Rathundi had his hand up for a second time.
Yeah, I think we get second round kind of thing, so... Yes. We will do that. Well, it does, because we want to make sure everybody gets their say-so. While we proceed with this gentleman first, who asked initially to speak again, and then we will go through the second round. So please, on these round of comments, please bring in new items that were said since you spoke, so at least we're getting additional content and context from you on things that have happened in the last two hours or so of discussion. Thank you.
Hi. So Dale Rathundi, again? Rathundi? One of the things I wanted to point out is Verizon provided the pictures that are on the city website that shows their first projection of, you know, what the tower height would look like from a couple of different angles.
You're going to have to direct that to staff. I can't answer that question.
Like, this is one of the pictures that Verizon provided from Crystal Tree Court view of the 80-foot tower.
Yes. So what he is showing right now is a rendering that was provided by the applicant, just showing what the tower would look like. So it's not the balloon test photo.
Right. This is just a rendering.
Oh, it's a rendering they provided as part of their application.
So the applicant's going to put their best foot forward and show what the tower might look like. And you notice here, this was an 80-foot tower. The tree berm is like a third of it. If you look at every balloon test picture, you're not going to find one where the berm is, they're all like half the height of the balloon, not a third. So none of the balloon tests are even close to the 80-foot tower height picture Verizon provided because of some of the information we submitted, right? The truck was five parking spaces too far to the south. Then they moved it another 20 feet to, or it was, it was five parking spaces too far to the west. Then they moved it another 20 feet to the south. So it wasn't even the end of the parking lot where the tower would actually be. So the Verizon picture that would show the height of the tower, where the tree berm is only a third of it, is the closest thing. It was actually a closer depiction of the height of the tower than all the balloon testing that was done.
If I can make a quick comment on that, that balloon test is more accurate. That original photo was taken before the balloon test was done. That was a photo rendering done by the engineer. But the balloon test is the actual height, 100-foot of string was left out of that balloon. Now, it did, you know, move in the wind. And the reason they moved a few parking spots over was to attempt to get the balloon directly above the proposed site. So they moved their location a few parking spaces in an attempt to get the balloon to fly directly over where the site will be.
Mainly because of the wind, they had to move it, and the wind was always blowing, and the balloon could not go to its full height potential. So it's, I think you realize when you look at the pictures, it's not really showing 100-foot height. One of the public comments that were turned in indicated that Geneva's ordinance actually requires accommodation of the tower to support colocation. A new tower has to support colocation. That's additional wireless carriers can use other parts of the tower. Cityscape indicated, based on the submitted plan, that the ground space for the future colocators would actually need to expand beyond Verizon's initial footprint that they provided you in their plan. The ground space for the future colocation would need to expand, it looks like an additional seven parking spaces, leaving only a remaining 17 parking spaces. So you put a tower in, you're going to plan for the future, right? Which the ordinance requires you have to allow other wireless carriers to put their sectors, their antennas, on the same tower. Now, the staff analysis, as it currently stands, only mentions that in this small parking area, it's only anticipated that the conversion of five parking spaces for the tower, you know, wouldn't really adversely affect the use of the development of that area. But that's inaccurate when you take the broader view of colocation on that tower. So they actually have to build a bigger wall and take away seven more parking spaces to do that. As we mentioned in the petition under reason four, we went over there a couple times, and on August 5th, 2020, you know, when this process started last fall, there were already at least 15 parking cars parked in the back of Mario Tricosi in the morning on Sunday. That just shows it would force the cars to compete for limited parking, because that's all that would be there if you had to expand that footprint area, because the other carriers have to put in their base stations to support the antennas that they put up on the pole. So you have to take in the broader view if you're going to put in a new tower and make sure it's meeting the ordinances, and it's not going to impact that property area. I wanted to say a little bit more about, you know, the scary thoughts about E911. That's really not a good justification. It makes it sound like home phones are now dependent on Verizon. It simply means a person who already has a phone with Verizon or one of the other wireless carriers, not just Verizon, in the area decides that the wireless service is good enough that they can drop their more reliable landline phone to save some cost. Note, that's a voluntary choice. It's an individual homeowner decision, and by itself doesn't make it essential. It doesn't even make it better if customers do that. Because, for example, with 911 calls from a mobile phone, does not even display your home address to the dispatcher immediately, like a landline phone does, which impacts the emergency response time. So that's a homeowner's decision if they want to do it. It's actually not even as good as the current service that the homeowners have. Just another question for Mr. Donnelly. I haven't seen any information about the configuration of the current towers. Now, towers are just structures. They say the towers are getting overloaded. Towers actually support multiple cell sites, which are just base stations. And they each have a set of, sets of antennas that they call sectors. And you may see some towers that have three sectors, maybe 120 degrees apart. They're directional antennas. You may see some with six or nine. But it's really the antennas and that that are carrying the load, not the tower. So one question for Mr. Donnelly is, have the current, I took a look at the Verizon One Tower on the north side. It's very sparsely populated with sectors compared to the two competitors' towers called Tower Number One and Two, you know, along the railroad tracks. So it doesn't even seem like they have the maximum number of antennas on that tower. So I wanted to ask if, has it been considered to upgrade the base stations on those existing Verizon towers? Can you tell us if those Verizon towers are fully equipped with the maximum number of sectors and maximum antennas in each one of those sectors already? That they're, they can't enhance, even upgrade the base station to a newer version of a base station?
So our focus is on this application for this tower and meeting the criteria of the city of Geneva. But I will say that if there was a way in which they could add additional capacity to neighboring sites, avoid the needless expense of an additional tower, they would do so.
I wasn't referring to neighboring sites. I was asking about your current base station configurations. What are they? The tower on the north side looks pretty sparsely populated with antennas. You add antennas, you add capacity.
Not following.
I'm sorry. I didn't hear-
I'm sorry, Mr. Dolan. I didn't hear your response to that question.
I'm not following the tower. There's a platform, there was a platform on the old tower, the new stealth tower. Our proposal does not have any antennas, all concealed within canisters inside the pole.
No, my question was related to, let's say Verizon Tower One, which is on the north side of the subdivision by the railroad tracks. Existing tower.
Okay.
It has a lot less sectors on it and antennas on it than the two towers next to it, adjacent to it, which are competitors' towers. So I'm asking, is the existing Verizon towers fully populated with the maximum number of sectors and antennas?
Right. So that takes me back to my original comment, which is if Verizon Engineering could add additional capacity to existing towers without the need for an additional tower, they would do so. The only reason they need this tower has been demonstrated by the testimonies submitted earlier.
Yeah, so I asked the city, just go look at that tower and count the number of sectors. Those look like squares, you know, mounted on it. There's three of them, 120 degrees apart. They're directional antennas. They got the uplinks and downlinks that your phone connects to. And then when you want to increase capacity, you go to six sectors or nine sectors. And that way, you are dividing up the area, so there's more antennas where each one handles more users, more connections. They seem to have a lot of space on that existing tower that, it's a huge tower, 150 feet tall, that's not being used. So they haven't submitted any evidence of their current base station configuration or utilization graphs indicating that they've already maxed out. And when you get to that point, you could also upgrade the computer systems, faster processors, more memory. You could do that to an existing base station before you say, it's absolutely necessary. I have to put a new tower in. Right? Because the technology advances, and every year or two, the companies they buy these products from, like the company I used to work for, you enhance and make bigger and stronger and faster base stations that they could mount at the, behind those walls in the building that are sitting at the base of the tower. That's why over the last 10 years, we've had these two towers, and they haven't had a change. Because the technology, you just upgrade it, right? Antennas, base stations, you upgrade it as you go. So I think what I've heard, hopefully what you've heard today, is the neighborhood is opposed to this tower, this tower site that's being proposed. It doesn't fully confirm to the Randall Road Corridor Comprehensive Plan. It does not fully conform to several special use requirements. It has a weak justification and did not provide the evidence, like capacity utilization graphs. Did not provide all the required documents that are required by the city. There were at least two of them, right? All the preferred preferences and the five-year outlook of what they plan to do. They didn't consider all these higher preference alternatives. And what you've heard from residents is it could impact the character of the neighborhood and impact property value. Those are the things that I'm taking away from all the comments that I'm hearing today, and I'm hoping that you're hearing the same thing. Thanks for the additional time.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Wagner, I believe you wanted to speak once more.
Yes, thank you. So Bob Wagoner, 1911, Crystal Tree Court. I want to respond to the reply to Emily's question from the phone. This, the comment was the Walmart area was not the least intrusive area. Closely following that was a comment about Crystal Tree Court residents. I want to point back to the petition that you have, signed by 200 residents that are not on Crystal Tree Court, that are also saying the same thing we are. This is not a Crystal Tree Court issue. This is an Eagle Brook Park area community issue. Going to refer back to the picture. This picture was taken from the opposite side of the playground towards the balloon, and that is directly in sight as well. This is not a Crystal Tree Court issue. I just wanted to respond to that. Also say, go back to the cityscape. If there are other alternatives, they need to prove that, and they haven't done that. A certification from an engineer doesn't address what's actually required by the statute. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'm going to ask for people here in City Hall if there's any additional follow-on. If not, then I'm going to go to virtual. And so last opportunity for people to follow on, speak, who may have already spoken on this matter. Please raise your hand so you can be recognized.
Daryl Mowen. Go ahead and unmute yourself. You have been unmuted. Proceed with your testimony.
This is actually Janice Mowen. I just want to thank everyone for taking the time tonight to really dig deep into this. And there's probably more that we need to answer.
Wait a second. Hang on a second. Will you please state your name and address? We don't think, it sounds like something different. Please state your name and address that you want to, and then you can continue speaking.
Janice Mowen, 1913, Crystal Tree Court, Geneva, Illinois.
All right.
The five-acre-
Thank you very much.
Beautiful park. We all agree, there's a park that's green space that Geneva owns as a park district, where there are kids playing baseball, softball, in a tawtyard, soccer, football. In that beautiful picture that was taken that pointed towards that balloon, that certainly was not at 100 feet, even 85 feet, maybe at best it was 60 or 65 feet. A monopole, a pine pole, that is going to totally change the concept of that park for anyone who either lives here or visits the community or goes down Randall Road. I would highly hope that the council will not allow this to be part of our community. There are other alternatives that we can use that would not even affect the aesthetics of the area. So let's do that. Our community, put that park into place. We have more to lose than Verizon or any other company that uses those poles. We put the money into that park, not them. Let them figure out another way to go ahead and solve their issue that they have surfaced here. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Looks like we have another person?
Yeah. Sean Callaway. Go ahead and-
Sean Callaway, go ahead and unmute yourself. You have now been unmuted. To proceed with your testimony.
Hey, Sean Callaway, 2061 Arrowhead Court. I just want to echo a couple of these things that people have said. You know, 80% of people, according to that study, would not buy a house in view of one of these towers. I am one of them. I did not buy a house at the north side of this neighborhood because there's a tower The picture of the balloon at the park is almost comical. It's almost criminal. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old, and it would just be such a shame, such a shame. So I, I echo everyone else. I feel for all these people. Bob Wagner, the gentleman who put $125,000 into his house. Perception is reality. And, you know, these, it's, I just can't even believe it's, that we don't have someone who could just throw this out. Anyone who's seen that picture of the balloon at the park is, it's just madness. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Again, anyone remote who wishes to speak, please use your raise hand function on, on the application so you can be recognized.
Matt Zaskis, go ahead and unmute yourself. You have now been unmuted. To proceed with your testimony.
One final question. I know I've spoken twice, and I'm just curious, again, going back to the circle, right, which shows where the tower needs to be. I'm curious, Doug, did, did you guys propose other locations? How many additional locations were proposed? How many were accepted? Just to understand how we landed on this one.
Yeah, earlier in testimony, I mentioned we looked at six additional sites. So our primary objective is to co-locate on existing towers, existing rooftops. Our last choice is to build a cell site. We only need a cell site here because there is no other option to solve the problem for the city of Geneva. It's been documented, you have a problem, it's coming to this city, whether you feel it now or not. It's coming, we're trying to solve it. It takes a couple of years to work out in advance of these problems, and this is the best, the least intrusive site to solve that problem.
That wasn't the question. The question was, you know, a, a woman brought up the Walmart parking lot earlier. Did you look specifically? Did you request, you're in the Ashley Furniture Lot. What other, what other companies did you go after and request permission to build the tower?
There were six other sites, six other sites inside the search ring that we considered. And that's in the.
Okay. All I'll say is the document you provided has one site inside the search ring. It says that it's 20 feet high, so it's not acceptable. There's no other data on that. It, it seems like we're backing into a solution that, that benefits Verizon and benefits you. It does not benefit the community. There needs to be another way. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, again, for folks, not right now, sir, I'm trying to deal with the virtual people. Anyone virtually who wish to speak?
Looks like Sean Callaway has their hand raised again. I'll go ahead and unmute you.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just sparked from Matt's comment. I, I thought I heard Mr. Dolan mention that without this, this giant tower, that there could be something like 30 to 40 towers, but they would be in light poles or, or whatever they would be, little antennas off light poles. To me, that seems like, it, it's so obvious that that should be the answer. If we're not concerned about health at all, then I don't care if there's 100 of those. I don't care if Verizon has to spend some of its $18 billion profits on that or whatever it is. But to me, this, it just seems silly that we're, you know, sitting on this Zoom for now three and a half hours just to, it's just, anyway, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay. If you're on remotely, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand.
This, I don't know how to raise my hand, but this is Ben Evans at Cityscape. I just want to make a, make a quick comment.
Excuse me, could you state your name, address, and who you represent? I didn't catch it all.
Ben Evans from Cityscape. I'm in Thiensville, Wisconsin.
Okay.
And my comment is, the gentleman who was, went to, was at the podium and, and speaking, he was talking about capacity and at one existing site. Well, you can't, engineering-wise, you can't do that. One site can only utilize a finite number of channels. Certainly, less than 100 frequencies any one cell site can, can utilize. You just can't keep adding channels to an existing site. If you do that, you're going to cause interference to other cells that are operating on, on those frequencies. That's why when you have adjacent cell towers, you don't have, you don't have one of them operating on the same frequencies as the one adjacent to it. Because they would cause mutual interference. So my point is, you just can't, that's not a way to add capacity. You can't just load on to one, to an existing site.
Anything further, sir?
No, that's it.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, I'm going to close it up, I think. If there's something germane, I will allow you to speak, but please give me something new, other than capacity, which, right now, I, you know. What's capacity? I don't know, really, no.
Every time somebody asks Mr. Donley about what was considered, I think the answer has come back every time, only co-location, only the other existing towers. So I don't think, I've heard there's been any investigation of either any of the other technologies, like rooftop base stations, rooftop cell sites, or small cells. And base stations do grow. You can increase capacity to them, that's why you add antennas and, and by the way, these cell towers don't have one frequency. I mean, they're probably running at 700 or 800 megahertz for one spectrum, 1900 megahertz for another, 2, 3 gigahertz range for another. So you can plan out your network so that you're not interfering and still increase capacity in the area. That's what network engineers do.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Commissioners, any follow-on questions, comments from the testimony so far? Yes, John?
Mr. Chairman, well, first to Mr. Dolan, I commend you for coming in here with an alternative based on your perception of the issues raised by the Crystal Tree Court folks in, in providing the alternative for a lower tower. I think you called it a monopole. What I'm struggling with is that we've, there's been continuing, an ongoing reference to an affidavit provided by an RF engineer, the senior RF engineer at Verizon. And I, and I take it that you're referring to a half a page affidavit from a Jesse McDaniel. And, and I frankly don't think it says a heck of a lot to me as far as what due diligence went into this, what alternatives there are. For me to, to gain any level of understanding and support for a request like this, I think I need to, to see a broader and deeper analysis of the process that, that resulted in this site being the sole recommendation for a Verizon capacity addition. I just, I just don't think that what we've got today, and I sensed the frustration in the staff's report, that they didn't get things that they thought they should get or had asked for from you guys in bringing this forward. So I, I'm struggling with that right now, and it's a decision that'll have to be made by you, is do we move forward to a vote or do we give you time to come back with, with a broader and deeper package and basis of information for us to formulate a recommendation?
I, just on my, my end, I concur with that statement, and it could, I was in hopes that we would get additional details from the applicant today. Maybe he would supplement his, his current application, but what I read in the staff report where they state that the applicant has provided insufficient justification why this type of wireless facility is proposed, are there other options? When I get, I don't norm, Mr. Dolan, you must let me finish my statement, please.
Oh, sure.
When I see, when I see that in a staff report, I don't normally see that kind of thing in a staff report. So that concerned me. But again, I'm willing to listen in a, in a forum and give the applicant a chance to expound on his application and give us additional details. They did provide additional alternatives during the meeting. So I was in hopes of being further enlightened, but I have to say, after nearly three hours of testimony, I'm not so, sir.
Yes, no, those points well taken. You know, if there, if there's consideration of a table for additional information, I do, I may add that, that, that sworn statement from the RF engineer, it does include his RF report, his radio frequency propagation report. Well, that was included as an attachment in our application that comes from him. So the propagation map showing before and after coverage in his, in his written testimony inside that propagation map is part of his testimony. So number one. And then number two, my reading of the report, and I know we have a gentleman on the phone who is, sounds familiar and part of the company that prepared that report, but my understanding was, he was asking questions why alternate structures were not considered, such as a mon, it does go on to mention a monopole tree. So we did read the report and understood, I understood from that report that he wanted us to consider more stealth options, which would include a monopole tree. So that led into the discussion with Verizon to modify application to include a monopole tree.
All right. Well, I've spoken.
Just, I mean, just, this is John Mead again. I, I, the type of detail I was looking for, I think is similar to some, some of the things that the public commentary echoed, was specifically what other new.
Oh, boy.
I can't hear him either.
Can't hear him.
It dropped for a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John. Sorry.
There we go. Thought you're sending, thought you're sending me a message. No, I guess what I'm echoing is, I think I want to see some of the things that the public was, was, was asking for is, what exactly led to this decision that this was the only alternative? What specific new sites were looked at? Why were they rejected? Why wouldn't they work as well, or why wouldn't they work at all? What other hierarchical options should be considered? Why were they rejected? Is, is the cost, is it a cost-effective issue or because we didn't want to put 30 to 40 small cell towers around, or is that too cumbersome to get those approved by various landowners? What went into this decision? Why did it come down to this alternative? We don't have any of that information for which to compare and come to a conclusion that this is the only option for this company in, to service this area. We don't have any of that right now, so.
I would concur. I think the reason why these items are in the ordinance is we want them presented. We wouldn't put it in the ordinance if we didn't feel like it was necessary to consider this information as part of the decision-making process.
Yeah, and I think, I think, you know, whatever it is needs to be pretty compelling to compete with the compelling arguments that have been brought. I mean, I agree with what you're saying.
Ben, you want to follow up on that?
I, I, I agree. I didn't, I felt from the beginning that the staff report pointed out a weakness in the application, and we did not get any additional information on that. And the public raised legitimate questions that were not answered other than by repeating what was already in the application. So I don't think enough new information is presented here to convince me that this is the only option.
Michael?
Yeah, and I won't, I won't repeat all that, but I basically agree. I think we need to have the rest of the information that's required.
Adam, do you wish to say anything?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. I definitely think that even, it was even mentioned in the, in the Cityscape report that there didn't seem to be enough to address the, the visual impact that, that the tower would, would pose to the area.
Okay, so, Mr. Dolan, I think you've heard a lot of comments, obviously, this evening. I think you probably should take them under advisement and come back to us with some additional information.
Well, I would propose that we table until the next Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have a meeting with the staff and a meeting with the, bringing now, starting with, with the, your third party, your, your neutral consultant, which is the Cityscape consultants, and have a meeting with both of them to make sure that, that our application is complete. We certainly worked with them for many, many months, and if, could there be some, could there be something not 100% complete, we're going to investigate that. And if so, we will, we will complete, make our application 100% complete at the next hearing.
Okay, that sounds good. So our next hearing is, will, is two weeks enough time, Mr. Dolan, to address the situation?
Yes, I think it is.
I also kind of asked staff that question as well. I don't know if two weeks is sufficient enough to cover all this territory. I want to make sure we, if we reconvene, that we will have the information in front of us so that we can deliberate.
Well, if you want to be safe and say 30 days to make sure that, since we have many parties involved in this, we could, we could meet the, the second meeting.
I won't be here for that one.
We might, Mr. Dolan, I think in talking with some of the commissioners and staff, that their availability due to not being here or up for vacations. Do we give you the whole month of June to do it and come back in first meeting in July? Is that acceptable?
I'll be here then.
Is that, is that, is that July 8th?
I'm not sure. July 8th, yes.
That is correct.
Jayden just told me.
I'm not available. Well, actually, if, if I could still do it, I'll be out of town on vacation, but I'd be willing.
Okay.
Virtually, maybe.
Maybe.
I, I could not be here.
Are we able to do it remote if we're not at our home?
Yeah.
That's a question.
I didn't even consider that. Thank God we have an attorney to answer that question.
So the, sorry, Pete. Up until the amendments for COVID, the answer would have been no.
Right, that's a thought.
But with the amendments for COVID, the answer was, we weren't sure. And then it was, yes. And now the answer is, I'm not sure.
Because COVID suffered.
We're in phase five.
Yeah.
So the short answer is, I will find out, man, and I will let you know. And, but my guess is, like many things in this world, after wherever we are in COVID, is that some of these things, that changes that we have made that have allowed people to travel and participate, they may carry forward in perpetuity. But it's an open, for everyone here, it's a question of the Illinois Open Meetings Act to make sure that people have the ability to participate in meetings like you all have and be able to see the people that you've elected or have been appointed and be able to participate in the meetings. And so that's the question that, that we're talking about here.
Is there a timeframe this all has to be taken care of under with Verizon? I think I read something about that.
We were talking about that, and I believe it's 150 days from the date of submission. And so we're evaluating that and.
Yeah, from the, from the date that the application is deemed complete, which I will have to get that date, but I, we still, we still have a window.
will have to get that date, but we still, we still have a window in that 150 days. I mean, I'm not here for the June 24th meeting, but I'm, I'm happy to not be here if you all are available and want to hold the meeting.
I'll be traveling June 24th. But I'll be here for both July's and the first June.
Yeah, what was the issue with the first June, the 10th?
Just if there was enough time.
Enough time. I want to make sure that we have enough time to cover everything in two weeks.
For the staff, or for-
Or Mr. Dolan, more than anything else. Some of the staff will make themselves available.
Yeah, I think we should try to do this in as timely a manner as possible. I mean, if that, the report must be somewhere.
Mr. Dolan, waiting to hear from you. What do you prefer?
Yeah, I'm open. You know, I was just understanding the schedules of all the commissioners. Two weeks, we'd be able to do it in two weeks if staff is, can meet on a prompt basis, but I'm sure that they will. And we can get the RF engineer involved, and we can look at the capacity utilization graph also, and we can supplement our data. But, yeah, and just a note on the tolling, or on the federal time limits. Certainly, the time is from the time of application, and there is tolling permitted based on the amount of time that the application, when you request additional information, the tolling is stopped at that point. So, but it is from the time of the application. But we've, we've not pressed that issue at this point. We want to make our application complete, but that is still an open issue.
Okay. So I think we'll go out two weeks, which would be when, Jaden? When is the next?
10th.
Two weeks from now would be June 10th.
So June 10th, 7:00 PM, this room, so that we would extend the public hearing to that point in time. I'm going to need a motion that affected a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we continue this public hearing till the next scheduled planned commission meeting on Thursday, June 10th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second, Holloman.
Boot and seconded. Celeste, if you're still with us, please call.
I am. Okay, to continue to June 10th, 2021, Thursday. Evans?
Aye, Evans aye.
Holloman?
Holloman aye.
Mataskill?
Mataskill aye.
Meade?
Meade aye.
Slifka?
Slifka aye.
And Chairman Stocking?
Stocking aye.
Okay, there are patents.
All right, thank you. So appreciate everyone spending the time with us this evening, both here at City Hall and remotely. And we'll be back at it again on June 10th, in this room, at 7:00 PM. And also virtually, I'm sure. So, both ways. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, members of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Dolan.
Probably have the mic on a turn.
Yeah, we're waiting for people though.
I thought that was last.
I'm just going to, it's on our agenda. So, any additional public comment? No. On just matters not germane to this, but just general public, like, somebody coming say they don't like something in town. So, like, we get that occasionally. So, again, we, it's on our agenda. Is there any other public comment that's out there, just in general, not regarding this public hearing, but in general comment for the commission's consideration? Okay, don't hear any other business? Jaden, is there anything, like, I've heard from David, he says there's a lot of things, a lot of oars in the water, but nothing.
Yeah.
Busy, busy people, like, looking, testing, kicking tires. I mean, and kicking tires, talking to staff, so.
So we have, we do have some active applications right now. We have the Malone Funeral Home, who is requesting a special use permit for a parking lot expansion, as well as a couple variations. Their application is still being processed, but that is on the horizon. We also have the semi-truck repair business that's proposed for the northwest corner of Old Kirk Road and Reed Road. They are also revising staff comments, trying to perfect their application so that it's ready to be brought before the planning, zoning commissions, and council. What else?
Anything new on mill race?
Something new went on today, I think, 801 something.
Why not?
There's variations for a non-conforming deck that needs to be replaced, and it's current configuration.
Yeah. So, and I think that one, you know, staff's reviewing it right now, but we're expecting that possibly in July.
Okay, cool.
Anything new on mill race?
No, sir.
Quiet. Okay.
Might have some late nights. We might need some Dunkin' Donuts coffee. If we had one in town, it was open.
I can count on you for that every single meeting. And one day, that's not going to be possible.
One day I won't be able to ask when it's going to open.
One day I'll have an answer.
That day will come. I don't know when.
Keeps inching along.
Can we see who's first?
Oh, there you go.
No, 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 I think, don't do that.
I have a guess, yeah.
You just don't know. This is rarefied air. We're just like, oh my God. But yeah, every time I go by there, again, as I always say, there's a little bit more.
I know, there's a light on, or there's, yeah.
Like, there's something else that happened, but it's still on it. All right. I guess, Mim?
Move to adjourn.
All right.